Roland.
All set? Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the planning board meeting on October 24th, 2018. We will have, start with the roll call.
Marty Gaye.
Tom McGinn.
Mark DeMar. Jamie Lowery.
Susan Roth.
Jens Börding.
Patrick Wurkland.
The first item of business is the approval of the agenda, which we have a couple of items to adjust on that right off the bat. Should I read down through it, Ted, and then adjust it? Is that problematic? All right. So, first item's approval of agenda. Second item is approval of minutes from October 11th, 2018, and as written, October 13th, 2018, which are not ready yet, so we'll have to adjust the agenda accordingly. Item three, citizen comment. Item four, pending applications, of which we have five. The first, Legro Lane, private way application, proposal to extend Legro Lane an additional 625 linear feet for the purpose of providing legal access and frontage for two residential lots exempt from subdivision review under 30-AMR SA 4401.4 and 4401.4.d-4. Francis V. Legro is the owner and applicant. Dana Libby, RLS, is the applicant's agent. Item two, request for amendment to land use ordinance. Request is to add museum to the list of conditional uses specified in the Business Industrial Office District, BI, in Land Use Ordinance Section 6.6.2. Motorland Classic Cars is the applicant and Sandra Gay, Esquire of Woodman Edwards et al. is the applicant's agent. Item three is KKWWD Water Storage Tank, major conditional use permit, which involves a proposed construction of a 70-foot-high, 1 million gallon water tank on a 13.34 acre parcel, tax map 15 lot 8A in the BI District, and access by a 15-foot-wide access road at 2104 Portland Road, tax map 15 lot 14 in the BI District. Kennybunk, Kennybunkport and Wells Water District is the owner of tax map 15 lot 8, and the applicant. Jamie Pascal, District Engineer, is the applicant's agent. The owner of tax map 15 lot 14 is Elizabeth Buzzell. Item four, under pending applications, is Raptor Falls, plenary site plan review, determination of completeness, proposal to construct an 18-hole miniature golf course with a dinosaur theme, complete with range building and associated off-street, off-site parking on an, it should be off-street parking, right? Yeah. Off-street parking.
Or on-site parking.
Or, yeah, right. On-site, yeah. On-site parking on an eight acre site formerly Fritz's Tire located at 1912 Portland Road, tax map 15 lot 12 in the DB1 District. Clifford Getkowski and Bree Duffy King are the owners and applicants. And item five, under pending applications, is Houston and Company, conditional use pre-app. That item, I won't read the whole description because they have requested to be tabled. Item six, land use ordinance amendments, which we are going to discuss one proposal. Proposed special town meeting warrant articles for pre-release correctional facilities, contractor yards and wind energy conversion systems zoning districts. Item seven is other business. So, two adjustments to the agenda that are noted. Any other comments or?
A move that we approve with those amendments.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Second item is the approval of minutes from October 11th. Corinne, I did note one thing in my review on page, it would be page three, right about the, sort of the second paragraph under the pay tech.
Yes.
The sentence sort of ends with just, does the board? And I think that should be, Gennon confirms with Mr. Jones that an extension has been requested, maybe from the board?
Probably. I tried a different method to take notes and I didn't like it.
Add periods in words?
No, I did it like a shorthand on the computer and then...
Oh, yeah. That was my, I mean, my take. I don't know if anybody else would have any thoughts?
Yeah.
Um.
I concur.
Yeah, one, one minor thing on the, will be the fifth page, right in the middle. Mr. Gebhardt asked that figure. It should be, is high?
Yep.
Besides that, it's great. I will, I will make motion when approved with these two minor changes.
I'll second that. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none. All in favor of approving the minutes as amendment? Aye.
Aye.
Want a, want a extension? Yep. Thank you, Marty. The third item on the agenda is citizen comment. That's something relatively new and reserved for any comment from anybody in the public that does not pertain to one of the items on the agenda. So, if anybody would like to bring something to the board's attention that's not already on the agenda, this would be your turn. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the pending applications. Item one, Legro Lane, private way application, proposal to extend Legro Lane an additional 625 linear feet for the purpose of providing legal access and frontage for two residential lots exempt from subdivision review under 30-AMR SA 4401.4 and 4401.4.d-4. Francis V. Legro is the owner and applicant. Dana Libby, RLS, is the applicant's agent. Before we get into that, I was, I think everybody should have gotten an email, a copy of an email from Gino Sarcione, sorry. Yep. Sarcione, Sarcione to the town planner. I have Gino Sarcione on behalf of Francis Legro request a 30-day extension for Legro Lane at the meeting on October 25th, 2018. Any questions, please call. Thank you, Gino. Ted, any more information on that?
Yes, Gino, and I had a discussion this week about the status of the maintenance agreement, which is truly the whole of it. The whole of it, as you can see, is, is the completion of that maintenance agreement and participation by all of the properties along the way. There seemed to be some confusion as to, well, who is responsible for what? Apparently there was some confusion as to whether or not the body would be responsible for the construction costs, and that, that was not specified in the agreement. So, essentially, they're having a meeting and going over this, going over the maintenance agreement and then attempting to quell any kinds of concerns, answer any questions, and get it solidified for the next meeting. Okay?
Any concerns?
As a result, because of, no, the concerns were all dealing just basically with responsibilities that were specified in the maintenance agreement. And essentially, that's about, that's the only thing that's holding this up. Because of the time limits that we have in those conditional use application, they were in the planning board would have to act tonight. So, in the event that the board does not grant such an extension, you would have to act based on what we have for the application right now. And that would be to deny or approve, or approve the conditions.
Since it seems to me they are engaging with, I guess, the other members of the, other owners of lots on the private way, I'm in favor of letting that play out. Marty, comment?
Yeah, comment, turn around. Maintenance agreement is usually, correct me if I'm wrong, with the existing applicants that are present on the lane at this time. Expansion on that would not bear the cost of the ones that are present for an extension of the road. Am I reading it right?
It could be any way they choose to do it. The association wants to make it inclusive that all, all of the road is to be owned by all of the people on that road.
Yes. Well, my question is, if they're new on the road, they would have to come into the maintenance agreement. But the extension of the road, the cost of the extension would not be bared upon the present ones who are there on the asphalt section now.
The issue has been that the, from what I understand, from what Gino has told me, is that there was confusion that they thought they had to bear parts of the cost of construction, and that's clearly not. It's not stated in the maintenance agreement, and he's clarifying that right now. So, no. They only care for the maintenance of the road as it is.
Yeah.
The road, the whole, all of the users are to have equal share in the maintenance of the road.
And any future, and it also plus any future of the new lot.
Yes, that's, that's what's required.
Yeah. So, I, I understand the extension, yes.
I make a motion, we grant him a 30-day extension as requested.
I'll second that. Motion been made and seconded. Any further conversation or discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Second item is request for amendment to the land use ordinance. Request to add museum to the list of conditional uses specified in the BI District in Section 6.6.2. Motorland Classic Cars is the applicant. Sandra Gay is the applicant's agent. You guys?
So, good evening. So, this is a continuation of the meeting that we had with you back in August. We went over the, you know, the request for the museum used to be added to the B1 at that time. And I don't, and I think that Ted's done a really good job in summarizing that in his memos to you and in his most recent memo. So, I don't know if you want to go back over that. I know we left it. We had the discussion on that, and really what it seemed to come down to was a desire to have a parking ordinance, or you had a parking ordinance, but it didn't, it wasn't really appropriate. So, you wanted to come back to that and discuss what would be the proper parking ordinance requirements. Again, Ted, thank you very much. Did a great job. He obviously spent some time and put together a list of some of the parking requirements that he found. I will just mention that Bitterford and Wells, which are not on that list, go with one space per 500 feet. So, that sort of fits right in with what Ted's suggesting. I know he suggested to you that it be 400 square feet up to 5,000, uh, 400, one space per 400 feet up to 5,000 feet, square feet, and then one space per 600 square feet after that. We think that's a great idea, and I think it allows some flexibility. Other communities haven't really done that, but I think there's a lot of different size museums out there and different projects, and that frankly doesn't affect anything that Motorland may be doing right now, but I think looking down the road, it makes sense for the, for the town to do that. I will say that in the, what you just read as far as the request from Motorland, we did request this to be a permitted use rather than a conditional use. Ted addresses that in his memo to you this evening. And I think my understanding is that he agrees that in the B1, it's appropriate to have it permitted use. It's not a mixed residential, commercial use. It's a commercial district. So, that having it as a permitted use there would be appropriate. The one other, just one other item, your ordinance now talks about gross, gross square foot, square requirement, so it's per gross square feet, but your ordinance doesn't define that. And some ordinance is used at, some don't. Bitterford, for instance, uses one space for each 500 square feet of floor space. That seems like an easier calculation to make. I think there's a lot of differences of opinion on what gross square foot may be. So, just a suggestion that you get rid of the gross square foot, just use square feet or square feet of floor space as, as Bitterford uses. It's just simplified a calculation to people.
Okay. So, just clarification on that. Is that solely within the museum, or is that larger into the parking criteria?
The idea of gross, gross versus net.
Yep.
Gross being the footprint of the building.
Right.
Net being excluded utility rooms.
Right.
And subdividing it all up into little squares, which makes it complex. And then argumentative as well. I mean, you can argue, well, the stairwell shouldn't be included because it's common space. And so, gross was meant to be the entire footprint. We could take it out and it would be the same thing.
Right. So, it could square foot of the space. So, if the museum space that you're using as a museum is so many square feet of floor space, it's easy to make a calculation based on that, right? Like you said, rather than try to figure out what little spaces maybe shouldn't be included.
In a hypothetical would be, in Motorland's case, where the, let's say, the second building, it would be that portion that is dedicated to the museum.
Museum.
Not include the office, the bays, because those are part of that hill.
Right. It's, so, I guess, exactly. So, rather than using the gross square foot of the entire building, use the square foot that's dedicated to the use.
Correct. You know, and looking down the list of, per the, to the, the comment regarding permitted or conditional use, I mean, there are others, you know, that I would say are more intensive as in the permitted use, i.e. a restaurant or retail. All of these would likely, regardless of the use, probably come before us for site plan review?
Yeah. If, if there was, if, if there was a conversion of an existing building of X amount of square feet, I think it's 2,500 square feet, then it would come to the planning board. If it was a new use or a new building, obviously, it would have to be site planned.
Yep.
Just like Motorland had to go through it, and Motorland would have had to go through it even if it was, wasn't a conditional use. It was, anytime you're making physical improvements to the site of a certain amount of square footage, and I can't, I can look it up, but that's what triggers site plan.
Yeah. I mean, so, Matt Whitrean, I mean, anybody please interject. I mean, we've got several other comparable types of, you know, facilities, theaters and playhouses, you know, restaurants, retail, professional offices, things along those lines that are already a permitted use, that I don't see a museum as being anything, you know, out of line with, so.
I think we're, in the BI District, which is our industrial district, very honestly, the BI District gets, you know, when you get down to some of the heavier uses, the heavy manufacturing, that gets into conditional use.
Right.
Things that produce.
Yep.
Hazmat materials or waste streams that could be problematic, that's where you start getting into conditional use issues. But otherwise, this is, museum is rather, the only impact it's really going to result in is could be traffic, assuming it's wildly successful.
Right. Right.
And that's the, that's the, too, problem. It's this.
Yeah. I mean, and ultimately, I, I would be surprised if, by the nature of a museum, if you got the peak hour trips that really had a big impact on that stretch of Route 1 more as, you know.
The rock.
I think the bigger things that, you know, and we touched on at one other point are, you know, larger vehicles looking at this as a destination for us to, to work through and address versus, you know, the typical peak hour bike trips.
Two buses of, of lives.
Yeah.
Yeah. In Saratoga, I looked at the Saratoga Museum, which is, which is a pretty extensive museum, quite fantastic. It was also in Philadelphia, too. You know, they have parking areas specifically for two buses.
Yep. Jim?
Yeah, I was just going to also mention that in the other zones where museum is allowed, all the other business zones, including the Gateway District, which is right next to it, it's a permitted use in those zones.
Okay. So, I mean, any comment from anybody else on the board with regard to the permitted versus conditional use before we sort of get too far along?
No, I think it should be a permitted use.
I agree.
Go ahead. I was just going to say, if you look at intensity of use, it's, it's, it's not something that really triggers a condition use in this situation.
Right.
It's, it is, as you say, no different than, than retail or food service. And clearly, if you look at that, at the trip generation, it's certainly less than retail.
Right. Any, any thoughts from anybody on the parking requirement that's recommended by staff? One space per 400 square feet. I mean, other than cleaning up how we calculate that, but conceptually, the one, one space per 400. In fact, Jens, do you have that right there? If I remember right, probably one space per 250 for retail.
That's, yeah. And that's what we would have had here since we hadn't done this.
Right.
Would have had used office or retail, which was a little excessive for this particular kind of use. Yeah, it's way excessive.
Just so I can get a sense of, of how many space it might need. What's, what's the size of the square footage of, of space?
So, I think the museum use areas, excuse me, 15,000.
No, no, it's like nine.
Oh, 10,500, 10,500 square feet. The entire, I mean, the plan's not filed yet, so the entire building isn't going to be used for museum purposes, but say roughly 10,000 square feet, which would be about.
Seven, like.
20, 20 little spaces, something like that.
It's like 9700 square feet.
Okay. All right.
So, under his, the first 5,000 would be at 400, and then the rest is 600.
Part of what we have to consider is not just your particular use, but this, a museum anywhere. So, so, we have to kind of think of four or five different museums, even though it may be unlikely to happen. So, think of, I, I'm on the fence whether it should be conditional permitted, but I'm all right with being permitted. But the big thing for me is, would be parking, especially when I hear, could be two buses coming in, pulling off Route 1, and then not be able to get.
Turning.
Turning and not be able to find a spot.
Yep.
So, we'd have to work that up.
Yeah, that would be part of site plan review, obviously. I mean, that goes beyond the, that goes beyond the parking spaces for people. That's, that obviously is going to have to be dealt with in the site plan.
Okay. My thought with regard to that, so, and it's sort of the, I don't know, I don't know how to describe myself this way, but 5,000 is not readily divisible by 400. So, I would suggest we, whether we make it 4,800 square feet, 4,000 square feet, 6,000 square feet, I really don't have a strong preference, but make it something that you would divide 400 evenly into, which would give you an even number of spaces to that point, and then do your calculation from there for the, any additional. And I like the idea of having it sort of graduated to be able to, you know, as you get in, so you don't end up with just this mass of parking spaces that may not be necessary other than, you know, one time or, you know, handful of times out of the year.
That's the idea.
So, right. So, you know, like I said, it's just my suggestion.
If you're not being divisible, please do, Mr. Chair. I'll throw another one at you. What are we doing in a situation like our, our largest museum here in town?
Probably.
Yeah. Because the actual, what's the museum? The museum's an outdoor museum.
Like, like other more informal type of settings we have in town, you know, as long as they demonstrate the, the need for, or, or the ability to have the parking. And again, if, you know, from that instance, it's all per floor area of the business. So, it sort of gets into an interesting calculation of how you do that and how it's delineated.
Yeah.
So, but that's, that's the nature of their museum. So, I would, I mean, any, any thoughts or suggestions from people there on, everybody on the board on that?
I have a question just along that lines that you have. We're saying 5,000 square feet. Okay. Building size, what size is 5,000 square feet?
50 by 100.
Okay. I'm just trying to picture the building of the square footage.
It's a good size, though.
Yeah. That's why I was saying.
It's not small. Let's put it that way. For, and most museums, if you were talking, let's say, the Museum of the American Indian or something like that.
Yeah.
Collections, you know, basically, you're, you're exhibiting spaces.
They're multi-levels, but I'm just saying floor space, particularly when we're speaking of automobiles, you were not playing first story, second story. Okay. And then turn around. How many slots have a, or how many are going to be in that section? I'm just, you know, we take the regular standing park, parking size, you know, you have them on both sides. It's, it's, how many vehicle might, I'm being nosy against, that's what my more question is. How, how many vehicles would be like in the museum?
Oh, the 5,000 square foot?
Yeah. Of course, don't forget, the age of the vehicles are bigger back then than the present vehicles of today.
I think you should talk to this.
You'd probably put today's vehicle, two equals one.
So, but how does that impact the parking?
I'm just inquiring. That's, I said I was inquiring, not.
Probably because that square foot criterion comes to that.
Do you recall the size of the building of your, your.
Newest.
Building that, yeah, the new building that runs along the northern side of your property? Just roughly, do you remember?
The, the, the newest building?
Yeah.
So, it's roughly about 12,000 square feet, of which about 9,700 is the, what we're calling museum floor.
So, I, I mean, it gives you an idea.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's where I was going, is my thoughts are.
So, I would, in order to make things easier, I will convolute it for the sake of the long run, and suggest we, we tweak the one space per 400 square feet up to, instead of saying 5,000, I would say 4,000. That gives you, you know, for a large building, 10 spaces pretty well right off the bat, and then calculate up from there.
So, keep it at 400?
Yeah, keep the ratio at 400 square feet.
Up to 4,000.
Up to 4,000, and then.
Just, just work out.
That's my thought on it. If somebody's looking at that.
Well, 5,000 square foot.
Well, that would give you 12 and a half.
Right.
So, then you're figuring out how do you, you know, how do you do the.
Orderment.
Or do that, yeah.
Did you 12 spaces?
Yeah.
I agree with what you said earlier about rather require some more spaces that might never be used. That, that's always pointless.
So, you're like 4,800?
I guess.
Yeah.
4,800.
Yeah.
It's easier to calculate.
Right.
Okay.
Rather than go one space for 500 square feet, I think you're all right with that, too.
Yeah.
This will be, anyway, it's not much the same thing, it's not more.
Well, if you, you ended up with a larger museum, you have, like, you get, end up with slightly fewer spaces.
For 400, that 48, that's 12 spaces.
Right.
500 would be 10 spaces, so.
It's pretty strict, actually.
Times three or.
Yeah.
So, it could make.
All right. So, you want to change one space for 500?
That's Tom.
Okay.
That makes sense, mathematically, it makes sense.
Do I have to make a motion on that, or just?
I'm just, I'm just gonna make sure.
There's more for discussion, yeah.
One per five hundred square.
Tom's suggestion is to make it easier, and, and would that be graduated, Tom, or just?
No, up to five thousand.
Oh, okay.
And then, one per six hundred after that, thereafter, works for me.
His, his thought would be one space per five hundred square feet, which in a five thousand square foot building is two less spaces. I mean, that, my only concern, or my biggest concern with that is that it's, that's half of the density of retail. Retail's typically one or two fifty, so I wonder if we're getting to.
I don't know, uh, what would be, be more of a need? I think you would have.
Retail, I think, is a lot more common use, but, uh, a museum could have a busy day as well.
What's the average size of a parking space?
Nine by eighteen, this is standard, we may go to ten by twenty again, because trucks are big. Nine by eighteen, this is standard since the county does.
Four hundred square feet is plenty, ample.
If it is one space per four hundred, building size.
Building size, right.
We're talking ten to twelve spaces?
Yeah.
Yeah, ten to twelve. Seems to me that's probably reasonable, except that they would have some function there.
That's what the problem is.
Right.
That would be a problem regardless of what ratio we're on.
That's true. And, you know, if, you know, th- these are, these are minimum standards.
Yeah.
There are some places which had massive parking that you can have, but they're minimum standards in the intent, we would hope that any, anybody who were to do something like this would know their market, or have contingencies, especially if they wanna have events, which I assume most do, and that's why, frankly speaking, if you look at Saratoga, or you look at Philadelphia, what they have, or, they have bigger parking lots than what we would require, mainly because they have events, they have their event venues, all sorts of things.
And more populous, too.
Well, there's much larger, larger, well, Saratoga's not that big, but it's a destination.
I'm saying populous in the, of the town.
Yes, I know.
But also, too, do we have to, as we have played before about parking spaces, you have to turn around just in the event, to leave something for motorcycles, parking, I mean, as a, as a compliment along the way. Equalling, cause usually, one parking space equals two motorcycles. I'm just throwing that out.
I don't think we wanna get into that, cause we'd have to do that for every single situation.
I mean, transportation in the summertime, not everybody's on four wheels.
I understand that, but again, these are minimums.
But it's fine, just, just throw out that, remember when VIP, which now O'Reilly's, when they were being built, we, we hashed around how many parking spots, and, and that is, there must be, what, fifty, sixty spaces, I've seen more than ten cars in that parking lot.
Yeah.
And the rest is sitting there. So, we just kind of, just fill in with all that property covered with asphalt, and never, never needed.
But also, too, at the time, Tom, there was, there was only one business, now, right now, you have three businesses going on in there.
Still only need.
About what time of day? You're, you're seeing it, I mean, have you seen during the?
They're all different times, and, and, there's, there's always plenty of parking you could.
I guess the question would be, Tom, since you were on board at that time, do you remember what standard you used to require parking?
I don't remember, all I remember is arguing against, uh, uh, why would we, why are we requiring them to pave all that? And in hindsight, I think that they, we shouldn't have required that many, so, I don't, and I think that probably has more steady use than, than a museum might.
The, the other question I would have with that specific instance, did the tenant require a certain number of spaces?
No, they would be glad not to.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Well, I'm not sure we can use that as a, as a measuring stick.
Right, no, right, so, I mean, we, Ted has, has recommended one space per four hundred, up to five thousand, and one pace, one space per six hundred above five thousand.
Yeah.
Um, I've thrown out my suggestion, do we have a motion so that Ted can go forward? I assume, Ted, you're gonna be looking to craft a, some language?
No, it's gonna be real simple, it's gonna, I'm just gonna put in the chart.
Okay.
And you're saying to put museum, and then the, the corner, that's all it would be.
And have museum in the permitted use?
Yes, that's it.
In the V I?
Yeah, two, two, two actions, that's it.
Okay. So, here in the discussion, do we have a motion in order to send, send the parking forward?
Yeah, make a motion, but, but one, make sure we get the right numbers, was it, you gonna go with the four hundred or five hundred?
I prefer, I, my preference would be the four hundred square feet up to forty eight hundred square feet of building.
Well, you're gonna change it in the ordinance, right?
Yeah, it works better in numbers, equal parking spaces, Tom, that's why.
Takes care of them and future use, right? By changing it in here.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're looking to, to come to a consensus of what we are going to propose as the ordinance change.
So, let me, let me throw out a motion, we can, we can debate it, that the parking requirement would be one space for five hundred square feet, up to five thousand square feet per, uh, floor space, and then one space for six hundred square feet thereafter.
Second motion. Any further discussion?
Does that work out in your numbers?
Yeah.
Well, one for, per five thousand, yeah.
I mean, I, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
You said have a half a space, that's why I just.
Right, yep.
You guys are playing with your.
Ted, any, any major concerns there, is, you know, you've researched these?
Yeah, I'm more hired than a lot of research, or store, I should say, and, um, it's just, and, it's, uh, it's a little bit, uh, it was in between, it was sort of a median between the high and low, and some of them had retail, some of them had one space per thousand square feet, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of Tom's motion?
All right.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Oh, can't see you guys, I will stop.
Okay, so we'll go.
Say head, car head, or say car head.
Anything else, Ted, on that?
This?
Okay.
And we found it as a permit as opposed to conditional use.
Yes.
And, so has there been a motion on the, on the whole ordinance change, I mean, has there been about a whole ordinance change? We've done the parking, but has there been on the other addition of the permitted use? And also, there's a definition change, have we asked? Right, I just asked about the permitted use.
Yeah, we'll.
Yeah, I think the permitted use is part of this, but we're gonna have to museum change language that Sandra's asking.
So, clarify that for us, Sandra.
Sure, um, it's attached to, I don't know if you still have the letter, it's, if I can find it, that I sent to you back in July seventeenth.
No.
Um, the last page was the proposed zoning amendments, um, and there was a slight renumbering because you had, there was a double, garden centers was there twice, so we just, we put museums in alphabetically.
Yep.
And shifted some numbers down, and in the definition, um, we took out that it had to be a nonprofit, which didn't really seem to benefit the town to insist that a museum be a nonprofit, and, um, to say that, right now, it says that it, it has to contain, it says containing associated facilities for meetings, education, restoration, demonstration purposes, and we just suggested putting in, which may contain those additional, that doesn't have to contain those additional uses, but it may, so, um, those are, again, are attached to the letter, I don't know, Ted, if you still have that?
Yes, I do.
Ted, any?
I have one other question along that lines.
Go ahead, Maury, I'll have three.
Well, you're reading, turn around about parking, does it require to have any specifically tearing off or handicap?
Yeah, that's all part of the standards, yeah.
I mean, I've just.
Right, that's all part of the greater standards.
Yeah, I didn't have a problem with that, as I recall.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't think so, and I, I think at the meeting when it was discussed, nobody really had a problem with it, but I just don't think a motion is, I don't think it's be voted on, so.
Well, and.
And from the, from the other standpoint, we'll just say renumber accordingly, we, we aren't gonna change all that, I'd just say, I have numbers, put it in, renumber accordingly, and I'll just do it on their script, there's, you know.
Oh, sure, no, absolutely, I just, it's the definition, I just wanted to make sure this.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that definition, because I.
So, Ted, from.
It was written for one person at one point.
I know.
Or, I'm thinking of the future.
For clarity of the process, you are gonna have to pull together modifications to the different sections.
Yeah.
Definitions, V I, and parking, right?
So, three, two, six, six, one, and, uh, five, twelve.
And then, that, those amendments as part of the museum will go forth to a public hearing.
Yeah.
And then, on, as a, you know, assuming, as a major public comment on, as a recommendation to the selectmen.
Correct.
So, really, we're not, we're not taking any formal action tonight on everything, it's, it's more just a consensus of everybody's saying that's how we are, you know, suggesting, Ted, or, or directing Ted to move forward to craft the language to then go to public hearing, go forth to the selectmen.
Sounds great, thank you.
Correct. All right, we'll move on to item three. Kennybunk, Kennybunkport and Wells Water District, water storage tank, major conditional use permit, proposed construction of a seventy foot high, one million gallon water tank on a thirteen point three four acre parcel, tax map fifteen lot eight A in the V I district, and access by fifteen foot wide access road at twenty one oh four Portland Road, tax map fifteen lot fourteen in the B I district, KK and WWD is the owner of tax map fifteen lot eight, and the applicant, Jamie Pasco, district engineer, is the applicant's agent, the owner of tax map fifteen lot fourteen is Elizabeth Buzel. Yeah, Jane, how are you?
Great, thank you, how are you?
Good.
You guys should, I think, you packed it, have this little addendum from last time, because appearance of this thing is pretty important to the town, um, I can start with that, yes?
Yeah.
The front page has a photo of a tank from Mass, I got this photo from DN Tanks, which is one of the two likely suppliers for this tank, uh, that photo is almost exactly what ours will look like, same dimensions, proportions, fence, little lot, patrol building, surrounded by trees, it's, that's a very good idea of what this one will look like.
What height is this one?
That's just about seventy to the top, sixty five to seventy, something like that.
Yeah.
The next two photos in there are, I tried to explain it as best I could in here without, cause they can be misleading, those photos were the only ones I could get, and they are from a location about a hundred and twenty feet closer to the homes than the actual site will be, thing is, I launched balloons from the act, as close to the actual site as there was, as it opened, the actual site was all trees, and I couldn't put through it, so I moved over a bit, launched balloons there, all the way to one hundred feet, and they were invisible from everywhere my two helpers could go, and so, I, I wanted photos, so I moved closer to the point where they could actually see it, at seventy feet high, and that shows that.
It looks like you, you know, the balloon launch site A, and your, your plan here is, you know, roughly the same topography as the tank, so you felt, felt pretty comfortable from that standpoint, you're, you were launching it from a
Elevation wise.
moderately close elevation?
Yep, very close, there's two little noles there, and you can tell when you're in the woods, this is somewhat of a high, local high point, there's two of them, so, I launched from both, the closer one to the actual tank site couldn't see it, couldn't photograph it.
So, these two pictures here are both from launch site B?
Correct.
Okay.
And they're a hundred feet near?
No, that's seventy.
The balloons are seventy?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that, I marked the strength seventy, and launched them to that point, so that would be the top of the dome, what you can't tell from that photo is, the top of it has a dome shape. So, the water height inside is a close sixty feet, but you need another little bit of
Pantry.
No, just, the overflow is at sixty, but the wall was another three or four, and then the dome, seven or eight feet high, something like that.
And it wasn't visible from A, so the pictures would have just shown the trees.
I had a guy in a car, and I had another guy walking around the pond, and so I couldn't see it, we were on radios.
Nice.
And I put it way up, actually over one hundred feet, and the breeze started to take it, I, I had it up, I had a hundred and fifty feet paid out, but at that point, it was playing over, it was invisible.
It was sailing.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then you've got the plan here, um, I know we've talked a little bit back and forth, um, it's a couple of different items to address, or sort of understand a little better, from a, um, from a permitting standpoint, will, will you, will this project require any D E V permitting? You know, from a stormwater and pervious deserved area?
Something I can research, I don't think so, but I can research it, funny thing about this site is it's the top of, of a rock, essentially, so whatever drainage it has now, is just water shedding off a rock into inches of leaves and dead matter and roots, so this is gonna be, there, there won't be much, very, very little, um, removal of material from the top, it'll be just enough fill to make the tank maybe that, yeah.
Yeah.
And the reason I have minimal detail, this is the best detail I can get to at this stage, the tank manufacturer, whichever of the two ends up with the job, will produce a full design package, will cover all of this, so anything I'm doing, probably won't be able to live entirely, it may actually get there.
So, more from just a schematic standpoint?
Yes.
And, um, I do remember the last time we talked, there was some ongoing discussion with D O T, any progress on that front?
Yes, that's going to be, I met them up there again, I, I, sorry, they went out initially on their own, and their measurement was short of the required site distance, they were also looking at, that's an arterial, one who there's considered an arterial, site distance is about double any other typical road, and so they, they shot it down, said, you don't meet the arterial site distance, um, even with conditions, this can't happen, but they reviewed it internally, realizing it's a temporary access, and we're willing to do whatever it takes for signage, flagging, that sort of thing, so they rereviewed it, I met them on site, and they measured site distance, which was acceptable for standard fifty on our road, and they gave me, um, this, the, the permit is coming within a few days, but I, I just met them last week, I have an email from the D O T, the engineer, um, saying there are two conditions to this, the permit will be granted to two conditions, one is, we have a message board that we're gonna put on the northbound lane stating that we're turning trucks ahead, um, the other is a gated access, which I was planning on the whole time, that we would very happy to.
Just to limit any non-construction traffic from going out now.
And even limit, even limit that, just that.
Right.
This is, when the sign is active and during these, this window of construction, um, beyond that, it would be gated and locked, um, just enough space provided for a small vehicle to pull in to unlock, so, D O T was on board and all that, so I, I can provide a copy of this.
Yeah. Tommy?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Maury.
When might any of this start?
Ideally with.
I mean, what's the ideal, if everything, all the ducks are in line, are we doing it before the spring?
Yes, ideally, if I had permission to move forward with this.
Yeah.
We would tighten up the design at the roadway, if there's some drainage that has to be fine tuned, this, what I have so far is very rough, fine tune design for the driveway, that was satisfied, D O T isn't even asking for that, but that's the benefit of, of us. We'd go forward with the start of that road in the next month or two, we'd try to put up a bid within the next few weeks, that would catch contractors on the tail end of the season, they could come in, cut trees, start filling gravel, prepping the road for tank construction next year.
That's the reason I was thinking of weather, and it's around the corner, real quick.
Yeah, if we had three figures and all, that would mess things up. Yeah, if we had three feet of snow, that would mess things up, but we could take advantage of, doesn't matter if it's freezing cold, it's always workable, cutting trees and that sort of thing.
Oh, yeah, that's why I didn't know, I was thinking before the spring, where you have more traffic both ways.
Ideally, the, uh, driveway would be finished before, say, May, before it was any of that traffic.
Is this mine or yours?
You can have it.
Okay, um, Ted, any comments from your perspective?
No, I mean, the only, the only, the only problem on the road, I mean Jimmy and I walked the entire road, I think it's, it's gonna define where it is, it's a lane pretty much in green, the only thing was the entrance. You know, we have to do a lot of cutting there, how are you gonna handle that, that, that turnaround, got a T turnaround or hammerhead turnaround in the very beginning?
Because of the way it slopes?
Yeah, you got a heck of a cross slope.
It's, uh, yeah, I know, I got, that's part of that, like I said, that entrance has to be fine tuned, that's, I would consider a piece of that entrance. Because it's at, at over ten percent grade, you're either, your T is at a ten percent grade or your T is flattened and you've got this strange pump to deal with.
Well, then you're also gonna have to work the road to ma-, to match the, the actual gradient of the centerline of the road. With the T off, it's gonna have, it's gonna be flat and then it'll start working, yes, you kind of.
Or, or it'll come down, it'll steep or flatten at the T, it won't step.
Right, that, that was the other thing I was wondering if you, how are you gonna handle that?
What's the, what's the purpose of the, what's the purpose of the hammerhead or turnaround down at the, at the entrance?
To be determined. It's, um, it would be inside the gate, so that, you know, it would have, wouldn't have people trying to park up in there, basically, parking high. And, um, if somebody foolishly were to leave the construction site and try to go down the hill and leave, they wouldn't be stuck and have to back up seventy hundred feet, back up the road. They'd be able to turn around there. Also, there was supposed to be a booster station there at one point in time, so.
So, this is more of a long-term type thing, once the construction is done, the road will still be there, but yet.
It, it definitely won't be used.
Right.
We'll access the tank for daily or weekly checks through the condos, yeah, these not through there.
Right.
We just don't wanna put eighteen wheelers and concrete trucks, so it'd be upwards of a dozen concrete trucks a day, or a few weeks.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
That, the dust would be up because of seeing.
Right. N- no, yeah, we've, I think we appreciate your efforts there to, to minimize the impact, um.
So, just to be clear, um, it says they wouldn't be visible within, any place within the Kikirondo cottage area?
Top would be, I can't promise the sides, because it is essentially a sixty five to seventy foot gray wall. So looking through those trees, you, if you were looking for it, you probably would see something. But I don't, I don't think most of it is considered an eyesore, and you wouldn't see the top, top would be invisible.
To move, move one, I don't know, I would say, I think it would be less of an eyesore along Route one than, than from a neighborhood.
They wouldn't be able to see it, it would be looking intentionally between trees.
Yeah.
There would be that hundred fifty foot buffer of trees between the tank, the opening for the tank.
Yeah.
Cause that's another, that, that's open space, it would block it, you'd see there, about a hundred and fifty feet of trees, condos, and the opening to block it. So you'd have to, you'd have to be looking for it, I wouldn't say it's invisible, that would be a lie, but if you knew it was back there, you could kind of see it.
It's a very muted color too, so it should blend in pretty well.
Yeah, more or less, more or less camouflage.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a seasonal color, except, except for the white.
The tar are blue and gray, that's because it's a concrete tank, but they're sealed, and the seal are kind of dented, but if you try to do a strange color, it's hard to get it not modeled.
Right.
Where if you do gray, that's similar to concrete, it, it's a beautiful finish that, it's even in my model there.
Yeah, and I've been, I remember a project I was involved with at one point, that another planning board was pushing, um, for us, uh, like a, like a metal building to be green, thinking that that would be camouflaged and did some photo simulations, yeah, it stuck out like a sore thumb versus, uh, you know, a lighter brown type color, so that, you know, gray would fit in closer there.
I figured, I wondered if you would figure that the sky would.
Oh, Jesus.
Yeah. You would have made, how many G Ds are? Couple things if I'm honest.
Yes.
Jane, are you gonna change the culverts out to fifty in there, interest?
I will, I think it is, then the design is fine tuned, that's where I need guidance from you guys, I don't know if you, at this stage of the game, typically get a finished plan in. Because like I said, that driveway entrance needs enough work, we're probably gonna hire that out from someone that specializes in that sort of thing. But I don't wanna do that to then hear you guys say, oh, thank you for the plan, but we don't really want a tank in the driveway. So I'm, I'm looking for that, that forward momentum, so we can start to hire and put things out to bid and feel comfortable that, okay. If you need a final design on certain bits before, you can do it.
It's a difficult, so I didn't wanna do it. And he's asking for a conceptual approval, but that's kind of a, you know, have the.
Yes. I mean.
Unless it's subject to, the who won't, if a design submitted to staff, would I need?
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be anything we take a formal vote on, because there's really nothing binding that we have to provide. But I think our comments and questions should be fairly indicative of, you know, our, our general level of comfort of the project, you know. Personally, what I'm hearing is, you know, you've done, you guys have done quite a bit of due diligence for a visibility type of assessment. And, you know, it seems like that's gonna be, uh, you know, relatively manner. I think you've, you've heard us, hearing that you've made some progress with the DOT gives me the comfort level that you're, you're moving in the right direction there. And that we wouldn't spend a whole lot of time and effort reviewing a project that really is a non-starter, but as the DOT says, you're not getting an entrance permit. You, you guys don't wanna go through that either. The other big issue that, you know, I would see is, you know, you've got a road with some steep grades for a prolonged period of, you know, prolonged distance. You know, probably as you get up to the knoll at the top, you've got waters, you know, sort of shedding out in all directions, which, you know, ultimately is a good thing, because you're not, you know, you don't have this big, you know, turnaround or tank area that's concentrating to one direction or the other. It's all sort of being dispersed fairly well, so, um, you know, I would say, from my perspective, you know, moving forward, you need to make sure to spa-, pay special attention to the, the road and the drainage design from that standpoint. Does anybody else have any, you know, major concerns that they'd like to bring forward to the water district? Yep, Marty?
One question, do we know what minimum size would be? And if we have a guideline between somewhere, even if the minimum is a little larger than minimum.
Minimum what?
Yeah. Uh, culverts or whatever else that they were speaking of.
It's fifteen.
It's fifteen, minimums in town are, are almost fifteen inch, and it's to their advantage, because twelve inches have a tendency of clogging up the leaves and debris. Correct. Fifteen is have a tendency of washing out much easier naturally. I mean, as long as they meet the minimum requirements, I mean, they can always upgrade to, instead of fifteen, they can always go to a twenty, just for the sake of speaking. That is turnaround following the guidelines of, of the requirements that's needed.
Yeah, and I think ultimately that would be part of their drainage design.
Right.
You know, whoever is engaged in doing the design of the road, you know, if they're, if they're specifying a culvert right there at that entrance, it's sort of their responsibility to understand what the drainage through the culvert is and what size it would need to be, I mean. Do you have any, any recollection of other culverts up and down the road in that general area and what size they might be?
I didn't pay attention to it.
Just a, I mean.
The trick was going larger than fifteen and, and my, before I knew it, we were on Route four or fifteen. The reason I wanted to dual twelves, trying to get the volume but keep it low.
Yep, yep.
Because we do have.
We don't have that home.
An elevation, drainage elevation issue, it's relatively flat there. So, I wouldn't go big, I don't think we'd go much bigger than fifteen, even though doubling them up, so.
I don't think we have too many crossings with anything, things to be required, is that one wetter area, that small rail, it goes over there.
Some on the side.
But I, I think if we're hearing you correctly, what you really wanna know is, does anyone object to you putting a storage tank there in the first place? Is that what you wanna know? In other, in other words, before you do any of the additional due diligence, you wanna know if we objected, the tank, provided everything else falls into place. And so, um, I know we can't give them a rule on that, but I think we should tell them.
Well, we can take a straw pole.
Yeah, right, so for instance, I don't object.
Gins, any?
No.
Any major issues?
No.
Well, if you can make the road work and everything else, it would seem like we're all right.
But the initial idea of a tank, I think is acceptable to, to most of us, if not all of us, so, that's what I.
So what would you need to see before we went out to bid for the road construction and before I hired an engineer to do my drainage design at entrance?
Well, that's, I think, what we would be looking to see next, is really looking at the, the final sort of set of plans that you would have, I mean, what, are are you still reluctant to move forward?
Um, only because now we'd be getting into the big money, the road is gonna, the driveway, color road, it's not really.
Right, it's a driveway.
We're looking at upwards of eighty to a hundred thousand dollars to build it. So if I put it out to bid and then find out, you know, ah, this isn't gonna work for this town, or we're starting to get expensive.
You're looking for approval is what you're looking for from us.
So I need to know what you need before approval, I guess.
So, I mean, if we need DOT permit.
Right. But that's, that's coming, that's pending, that's, it's a pending permit.
But I think we would also, we'd need a little more detail on the, on the.
Driveway.
The driveway design and the drainage of that.
Of the full length of the entrance, so.
That, that's encompassing everything, but the fact is, before they even put it out to bid, they had to have a, a design so that the bidder knows how to design.
Exactly.
How much it's gonna cost you, so you still need, you still need the design.
There's levels of detail though, if we were building a subdivision, say that there's a town road in the end, separate road, obviously it'd be immense amount of detail. But this, you know, it's been called similar to a logging road, so a logging road on private is kind of what we're doing, minus the, the first two hundred feet will be paid to prevent washout. Beyond that, it's, it's similar to a natural logging road on private.
I, I think I expressed it before, before that, I don't know whether he used the term logging road. And the reason is that I've walked the whole, the whole length of it with Jamie, and I think the, um, similar profile shows, shows that it's pretty level, except for the areas that I designated as steeper areas. And that's, I think, where you might need a little more detail, but I'm not sure you need to, to do a, a full private road design for the whole length of this access road, because it's a, it's a, it's going to be essentially treated like a driveway, or like a.
Temporary, yeah.
Well, it's gonna have swells on the side, you're gonna have to fan out, you know, as we had talked, as, as I had mentioned, I think this should be in the field. These skitters, rips, that place out, but they had basically dug in some cases three foot deep trenches that were, um, basically parallel to the, to the gradient in some places, so it's, they're almost like level spreaders, um, naturally forming there, the runoff's gonna go into some of those. So, it's gonna be like thank you mams on, on, on a logging road, where you'll go down a certain distance and then spread it out to the sides and they go laterally, you know, along the, along the contours. So I'm not sure that, that we would need that level of detail all through all of the entire road, I think it would be a little better to have the detail done. Migrates concerned is at the entrance.
Yep.
You know, because that's the hardest part, that's where it's steep, it's, that's twelve point five percent to there, average, average just right off it for the first hundred feet, and starts to level it up, that's, that's the problem.
Jamie, how long is the road, do you remember?
Seventeen hundred feet, roughly, that's to get to the site, but to cross onto our property, you've got another couple hundred feet of road before it opens up.
Right.
So I have a question, so you now know that you have everybody's blessing for the idea of putting a tank there. Can you provide the board with enough of a preliminary plan so that you, we see what, where the culverts are, that they're fifteen inches, before you get into a tremendous amount of detail, but give the board enough detail in order to give you a green light securely, comfortably, to spend the money you need to do in order to get all the final plans done? So, I, there's, there's probably gotta be a, a step midway that you could get your bidders to do that for you. Just to give everybody sort of a preliminary roadmap that we see that you can be able to accomplish what you want and take the grade, get the culverts done, without getting into a tremendous amount of specificity along with the tank, then maybe we can bless it so that you.
And put out the public hearing and everything else.
And put it to the, yeah, so we can really move forward before it snowfalls.
I can do that, we can have a detailed, detailed drawing set up that first couple hundred feet, it's still green before it flattens.
Yep.
Detailed enough that they can build it and, cause we're going to need that anyway, you know, if, if you're saying that, once that's done, that's my next step approval. That's the next step before I can go out to bid anyway, that's where they would start.
Right, so one of, I, my, my thought is do that, so you're not stuck. And, uh, don't have to spend money unnecessarily if you can't accomplish all the things you need to in order to get a legitimate road in there, so.
You got enough ledge up in there. This, this is. You have enough ledge from the surrounding area. Except at the bottom, this is a fill job, there's no, no glass there. Huh? There's no glass. No, I know that, but I'm saying from the surrounding area, there's enough fill.
The other thing I would just say to make sure, um, and provide that confirmation to us from a stormwater standpoint, that you're not triggering any thresholds with the DEP there. What would, he would just need to demonstrate he's controlling it adequately?
I think he just needs to call Kanco and find out whether or not he needs a PDR, because it's gonna be over acre of, uh, this over there, like you said.
You may not need it, so.
Will it be? It was gonna be close, that's, that's what, I was just sitting there calculating.
Well, I got about forty one hundred square feet of, or forty, forty one thousand, about an acre at the tank site, and then you include the roads, so I think I'll go with it. The issue is that the road is a temper, it's sort of like a logging road. And actually, the tank site, we plan to put on, I think, I think I suggested six inches in my notes, six inches of topsoil, because it's really zeric up there. On top of that, you can put your crush stone there, and then you go put your topsoil on, it's gonna get dry, like we saw this, this one, so you want that extra layer of, of four inches you do isn't enough and that kind of zeric. A little bit more, so you, you don't lose all your grass, or whatever else you, I mean, you, you didn't specify like grass mix, you're like, you've got probably a fescue or something that can take the drop.
Yes, it'll be more of a natural mix over time, we're not gonna stop, when the bushes grow, and we'll just push hog it, often you have to gain access to it.
Yeah, or, and here long space.
It's gonna keep all the dirt together, I think, it's gonna give you.
You aren't. So because of revegetating, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I, I, that's, I don't know.
Right, so then, I mean, ultimately, that's part of.
So I ask the question from the authorities, if you need it or not, and if you do get it, and if you can, if you don't need it, then just provide some kind of documentation that that's the case.
Yeah, and, and ultimately, we just need to understand, as we go forward in the process, you know, may not necessarily, the DOT was a big issue to overcome, to know from our standpoint moving forward. Ultimately, as you get into the DEP review, it's, it's something, you know, that will evolve as your design goes on, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Did you have any other concerns about Jane, trying to deal with the tent?
No, not specifically.
Cause I, I, I look pretty, I looked at it a little bit earlier, there's a low spot, there's a flat area to this east of the tank, that looks like a good collection.
Yep. But I think if they're staying, staying down under the threshold.
I don't know what's there though. Do you notice that? Down, going downhill, there's just, from your slope going down and then it flattens out and through there, almost looks like a wetland, but I don't remember any wetland there, we walked it, so, it's a good collection.
I mean, for, for the nature of this, if they're staying under the DEP thresholds, then I don't know.
Well, I'm just thinking of anything that's formal to manage.
Right. Well, I, I think, I mean, my thought is, is it's going in and shedding. That's, that's certainly helpful rather than all of it collecting in, in one direction, so.
You can ask that question.
Yeah.
Yes, ask all the questions. So you have all the answers when you come back. So, as they say, there are no stupid questions.
Right.
Just the stupid. I'm, I'm gross.
So, I mean, you've sort of got a consensus from us that, you know,
I had your action.
Don't think that, yeah. And thank you for helping with that.
Oh, I, yeah.
So I, so we'll consider it complete upon submission of, of these materials and then we'll go up to the department?
Yes, yes. So we can expedite.
Right.
So we're not looking till, we're looking till the end of November.
Well, how long does it take before you can?
Well, if he gives me an app, well.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, that would, because.
That's what it's looking, so we're getting into the.
Right.
So you have to get those agencies le- letters or confirmations ASAP?
Yes.
Yes.
Agencies? Oh, one DOT, one's pending, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
You've already got the DOT, so next question, Jamie. Yeah, if you're looking at the next one, then who's gonna do the design? Are you gonna do that design down there?
Uh, I think we'll hire it out. Norm is on board with that. It does, it's a challenge there.
Yep.
With the slope and the minimal ditch, um, kind of changing the land a little bit, so. Um, my comfort level is not where I would like it to be. So we'll probably hire it out.
How soon can you flip that?
Have you guys had any coordination with anybody?
Amazingly, there's a guy just down the street who stopped in on his lunch break. He's walking through and he just introduced himself and he happens to specialize in that kind of work. So it was perfect. He happened, he needed me in the hall, said who he was, and I said, I mean, we usually hire out, but there is this one challenge. So that's what I do, so.
Someone's welcome?
Yeah, right on, um, Fletcher Street. Never been in business.
That's, uh, Jamie.
Yeah.
I know most of the contractors.
So there's nothing formal we need to do right now, other than now you know what you need.
Right.
Where, you don't object to the project, come back with the documentation.
Right.
Or maybe you will put it on the public hearing, correct?
Right, give it complete, you know.
So you can get that.
Go forward, public hearing. Thank you, Jamie.
See you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Good luck.
All right. Item number four, Raptor Falls Plenary Site Plan Review, Determination of Completeness. Proposal to construct an eighteen hole miniature golf course with a dinosaur theme, complete with range building and associated onsite parking on an eight acre site formerly Fritz's Tire located at nineteen twelve Portland Road, tax map fifteen lot twelve in the DB one district. Clifford Gatzkowski and Bree Duffy King are the owners and applicants. How's it going?
Hi.
You guys dry out?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was pretty wet there.
Nearly, that was a chilly day, yeah. So we'll, I'll, I'll just hold it again.
Mark that you've done that actually has dinosaurs or some, or some other animal or structure so we could see the relationship in size to, from the, uh, miniature golf course in relation to the amusements you can have on the course.
Chichester's on a big slope at the road north, any big, they've got other things next to it like paddy cages and mountain climbing stuff, nothing associated with the golf course.
Okay, 'cause I went online and looked at a bunch of different things to try to understand what the ratio is between a human size and the size of some of these.
I think we've got some three D pictures. So do you have three D pictures?
Oh, yeah, we got, I got a whole, a whole split of what they're at, like where they're coming from, what they're actually gonna look like. We have them next to people so you can see them in relation to size. So they, have they been? Got a whole bunch of info on that.
Share with Ted?
Yep.
Or no?
Do you have them?
I have them here, do you want to hand them out now, or?
Yeah.
I'm not that, I'm not that disciplined.
Now looking over your shoulder.
Look away. Yeah, so. Is.
Go ahead.
Do your. As much as you can.
Add the dinosaurs a little bit ahead, 'cause I was gonna start out addressing the concerns from the last meeting.
Oh, you should do your, do it in your way.
Do it your way. You're the one who's presenting it.
So, the three big things from last time, the concerns, were just that we needed to have the proposed building footprint within the footprint of the existing building. We didn't have a plan to show that. We do here, it's on the actual grading course for, um, Castle Golf. So, um, existing footprint of the current building and then the clubhouse proposed is right within it. Um, the second thing, of course, was that we, this is, I think, was the major thing that kept us from getting, you know, determined to do it last time, is that we didn't have a grading for the eighteen holes itself, so we have that now. And, um, then that's, as far as I know, complete. I've talked to Ted about that pretty extensively today. Um, and then the landscaping plan, Anthony's worked that out with Ted. We have an updated plan here, which is gonna be on this room.
Parker.
Oh, we've got that one. I was gonna say, I'm not a critic of that, that's.
So those were the three major concerns, um, and hopefully those are addressed to satisfaction. Above and beyond that, um, we've seen some concerns from our neighbors we kinda wanted to address. Um, so, the first of which being driveway location and DOT permitting. Um, I don't know anybody who's been here at the site walk, um, probably understands Alan had some pretty great concerns about where it was. So, um, I actually, I have some correspondence here from the DOT regarding where we are and aren't allowed to have the driveway. Um, and, um, all except for one of yours, you have this letter attached to the back of yours, and I'll, which I have this after, but I'll just read the one paragraph in here that matters. It says, uh, in its current configuration, the two access points, one in front of the building and one to the south do not meet the minimum standards set forth in the state's access management regulations. In order to receive a permit, the department will require that the existing access in front of the building be completely removed and excavated, creating a continuous ditch past the front of the building. The southern access will require paving and if desired, can be widened up to thirty feet. The southern entrances not meet all the minimum requirements, but the department will waive the noncompliant issues. If an alternative location is desired, it may be possible, but the only location is solid, meet most of the requirements, will have to be very close to the existing southern entrance, which is where I think we had the proposed one. Um, we've worked this out with Anthony and, um, so the. This from Baker. Yep, just go to the front page here, so.
Wait, could you walk over this way so we can, so we can sort of, uh?
As a matter of fact, actually.
There's a total one on there.
I have a bunch of writers.
Okay, so where are you, where, the building is now and where you enter, so. Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't see that far.
Current building here.
Right.
There's an entrance here that's part gravel and half pavement, and this one's a no-go. They want that one completely gone. This is the existing one here.
We're proposing one here.
We're proposing one here, um, but based on talking to Anthony, um, which is.
Well, you were concerned about that, 'cause you didn't want people coming mistakenly coming down your road.
It's not just mistaken coming down what, my road, but once cars are trying to exit there, we have no visibility at all to get out ourselves, you know.
Yep. Here's the other location that's approved on the plans from the DOT, which is, so there's a light pole right here. So the current one on the plans is just on this side of light pole. The existing one's just back on this side of light pole.
If you go back there.
So we're gonna.
Here's the existing entrance right here.
So the existing entrance doesn't meet the standard, is that right? They wouldn't let you keep it there, or they would?
So they will let us keep this one here. So we're actually going to amend the plans to address his concerns and move this back to where the existing one is.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, I mean, 'cause obviously, we're in a rock and a hard place.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? Because we got a hill on one side and a dip on the other. You know, I'm, I'm more comfortable with that in the aspect, because at least we have a little, you know, 'cause with the original one is like fifty feet away. I mean, when there's, you know, just say you got three, four cars trying to leave. We're trying to leave by driveway, we're stopped. We can't, you know, we have no, no vantage point. At least with a little more distance, we can see, even though it's, we're still gonna have an issue.
Yeah.
But I mean, we can't render that property useless, you know what I'm saying? You know what I mean? Just, 'cause of the driveway.
Yeah, it's fine. The DOT is telling us this is the only two places we can have it. This is the proposed one. It doesn't sound like it works for you. We figured out a way to make it work. We're as far back as we can get with what the DOT will let us.
Yeah, back to where it was kinda directly.
I remember pulling out.
'Cause I got some stuff from the DOT, where it was ramped up.
It is troublesome. You lose cars down that.
So what do you do with all the parking spaces? If you move this over here, so you're gonna, so you're having.
These spaces are gonna be loose, we'll just pick them up.
Yeah. Okay.
Regroup.
Any questions there from anybody?
Yep. So.
I think.
But I, if you guys have.
Yeah, go ahead, too. No, that's, that's reasonable.
I do appreciate, I just, I do appreciate you guys addressing, you know, my concern. Thank you.
All about making the neighbors happy, you know?
Well, I think his.
We're gonna be neighbors for a long time.
We'd rather go into this and have a lasting draw.
Well, we did the walkthrough. I mean, I think what he was gathering is legitimate, I mean, with the snowball and everything else like that, they couldn't see what he was. Okay, you're a bit, you know, plus there's all the people who like wrong way people who love the wrong road, so.
So Lloyd, do you guys wanna?
Yeah, sure. So, I, I think specifically, um, the concern from our neighbors is that they don't want this to be like a, uh, you know, a Barney comes to a bundle type of situation. Barney camps in a bundle.
I thought that wouldn't be real.
So, that was our goal here with the pamphlets, is these are actually the dinosaurs that we're getting. I'll, I'll be in a fraction of these. We're only gonna have about, um, six dinosaurs, I guess.
Yeah.
How many brontosaurus's do you have?
Just one.
Just one.
So that's, that's another part of it. We, we only have one tall dinosaur coming in at twenty six feet.
Twenty four.
Twenty four feet, I'm sorry.
That's a brontosaurus.
That's the.
Brontosaurus.
Or brontosaurus, yeah.
So after that, the tallest dinosaur is only twelve feet, and then after that, they go down much lower, all the way down to four feet.
Oh, I see how you know it's a brontosaurus.
These are all like, uh, neutral colors.
Yeah, that's.
That is the thing, is that they're gonna blend in with the scenery. There's no bright colors. They're not, they don't glow in the dark.
And they're moving?
Uh, few of them move. Prob, there's about four or five of them that move, but they don't move around the property. They just kinda like, you know, shake their head.
That would, that would be scary.
The movement's pretty minimal.
The stegosaurus is pretty big, so is their T-Rex.
So what about, uh, some sound?
So, the sound. So, we contacted the company that makes them. So if you turn them all the way up to high volume, high volume, they actually will max out at a hundred and ten decibels literally like right from the speaker. So, we're going to, Ted gave me the information to contact a guy to do a professional sound test. I bought a sound meteor and did some impromptu testing at home. Super confident we're not gonna be sixty five decibels at the border of the property, um, which would realistically only be at the road anyway. Um, you guys that were there at the site walk probably realize that we're kind of in that fishbowl depression and have all the worst in surrounding area. I would be blown away. And, and at the end of the day, we don't plan on running them at a hundred and decibels, I mean, ten decibels.
They'll come with volume controls, so we'll be respectful.
Yeah.
For, for the comfort of your, your golfers, a hundred and, a hundred and ten decibels is probably unrealistic to say that you're gonna do that.
And that's way out of the question.
Right.
Yeah, it's, I would say we probably run them maybe closer to sixty five or seventy decibels, somewhere in there. We're, I mean, we're putting a lot into creating a very serene, peaceful environment. Um, aside from, you know, the, the noise level, I think, with the landscaping and everything too, the colors of them, the fact that there's gonna be a building blocking them, all the trees are gonna be there. I don't think you're even gonna notice them from the road so much at all. Um, I, I would be kinda shocked, you know?
What's the maximum sound?
Sixty five.
Sixty five decibels.
That's probably.
And I think it's sixty after ten P M.
Yes, yeah.
Did you guys?
Right, that would be a factor.
Loud conversation. Really loud conversation.
Yeah, we're not looking to compromise the integrity of the environment that we're trying to put together to be accommodating and friendly and environmentally.
We're trying to do it really tastefully. It's gonna be really well landscaped. It has water features. It's, we're not tacky people. We're not. So, we're trying to do it in a tasteful way.
The landscaping on these jobs is pretty impressive. They're patented, so.
I'd like to hear what they sound like, though. So, I really do wanna hear what they sound like.
Yeah, we have a little video.
Could I make a comment?
Yeah.
At this point? I live at Cape Rondo, Condes, and on a summer night, I can hear the mic, the, um, loudspeakers at Bentley's, and that's over a mile away. It's true.
I can do it. We live on Walker's Lane.
Yeah, that, that's a live band.
That's live music.
Yeah, it's.
Well, I can only, like, just a person talking on the lots, on the microphone. Seven here.
We can hear.
Seven here.
You'll probably hear them over us. Um, I mean, we're, we're gonna be running a fraction of that.
You can always measure that with your machine.
Yeah.
They're probably, they could be kicking out two hundred plus decibels.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't even know what they're doing.
What their numbers are, you might compare the two.
Well, why don't you get us some recording with sixty five decibels, and let's hear what it sounds like.
Right, well, if you had, you said you had something on your phone.
Yeah, you wanna, there's a couple of, um, videos that you can watch of dinosaurs.
Decibels and here.
The only, the only downside.
Yeah, that's, that's the caveat, that we're inside. I mean, there's a lot of factors here.
Yeah, and there's like background music to it, and it's, uh.
Is there music that's played in addition to the dinosaurs making sounds?
No.
Not on our property, no. There's no other background. I'm just saying in the video here, 'cause it's like a promotional video, so they're like. Sorry, I'm too curious.
Is that the noise of the animal?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's trip those bass music.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like a low one.
It sounded pretty benign.
Yeah.
I mean, number dot.
What's the T-Rex sound like though?
Well, the volume isn't gonna be any louder on him, even if he has like a good sound of a roar or something like that.
So, um.
But again, we'll, we'll have.
Yeah, so I think, I think that's an important consideration you're hearing, that that's an important consideration from, from us, the neighbors, you know, the noise, the visual. Ted, you had a couple of, um, of comments
Yeah.
on the plans, the site grading. There appears to be a discrepancy between the two, sort of the architect and engineer's plans that needs to be rectified.
That wouldn't be a problem. The, I got the architect's plans the day before the plans were due, and I told Ted I didn't have time to match my stuff into there.
Yep.
It'll, it would take me five minutes to, to match my stuff into there.
To match up the grading, um.
We talked about that this afternoon, too.
So there's, uh, you guys will be applying for a stormwater permit by rule?
Yep, I met with them today.
Yep, how, how was that?
I was gonna leave the application with them, um, but I knew we were changing the entrance.
Yep.
I didn't wanna give them a set of plans that wasn't even the final designs, like.
They get cranky about that.
They looked at stuff and they said everything seemed to be in place. Just leave the fifty five dollars of the counter in the plans and they'll be all set and then.
And that's the. And that's the lowest tier of stormwater review?
They do, they may or may not even review it, um, after fourteen days, if you don't hear back from them, they're just granting the permit, so.
We need to get you guys in on the video there, I didn't know.
I can hear.
So we discussed the entrance a little bit, and everybody seems to be, you know, it's consensus to help with alleviate the neighbor's, neighbor's concern. Gonna move the entrance and, I guess, engage you in that as they move forward with grading. September twenty-seventh meeting, parent scale animatronic sound decibel levels, um, so that's being worked out, um.
So what, let's, what are your, what are your, is that your submission?
No, we're gonna have, um, I'm gonna contact the guy that you gave me his information, have the professional sound test done, so that when we go to the hearing in two weeks or whatever it is, we can actually say this is the numbers done by somebody professional, this is where we fall.
Yeah, I think you should.
Very important to be able to have.
And I think the neighbors would like to know that.
Yeah. As far as the sound of the dinosaurs goes, non-themed courses are gonna be playing some kind of music anyway, so even if it was non-themed, there'd still be some sort of sound, but unlike Bentley's, we'll be closing at ten, not one. So after the dinosaurs turn off, you'll have the listening pleasures of Bentley's again. But, but I would be shocked if you heard what we're gonna have through those trees and everything there.
They're also on volume control, we're respectful.
I question, what about the lighting? I know at most of those events, those lights are very, very bright.
The lighting is, we were proposing these L E D lights, which I've never, never used before, but I think the brightest spot on the whole golf course is under three candle foot.
How close is that to our property?
It's, it's not, you will not, you won't be able to see it. It's got all the trees, it's all, all the light bulbs are shielded, so it's only downlit, and the, the poles are only fifteen feet high.
Will those lights be on at all times or shut off at?
They'll be shut off after the course is closed.
And everything sits down low, and if you guys are in the subdivision above to the left.
We're pretty high.
You're way above it, you guys saw from the site, the sidewalk, and everything, it's, everything's gonna be contained in almost this bowl-shaped area. Um, and there's, there's ledge around, everything's gonna be just south of the ledge, um, there are gonna be trees up on the hill. And just to me, from an engineering point of view, it's just a very easy site to work with, and especially, um, just with the butters. I mean, I don't even know how, you guys can be affected. You guys are still, I mean, you guys aren't even concerned with your houses.
Nope.
And you guys are the closest.
Yeah, I'm not concerned with the house at all, the only thing I, you know, I was gonna bring up on some buffering the screening is where the parking lot areas are, and we have a right-of-way, you know, driveway going in. You guys, I haven't seen like a detailed plan, if you guys have something, but it looked like just natural vegetation.
On your side?
On that side, you know what I mean, I, I would like to ask that, you know, there'd be some additional plantings in there that would help just buffer that, you know what I mean? And we kinda, you know, obviously, everything's gonna grow up, you know, but it takes a long time, but I've been there twenty years, you know, kinda picked a spot, family's been there forty-plus years, you know, kinda you know, like what we got, you know what I mean, and, you know, um, wouldn't mind having a little more of our friendly sort of parking spots, because after that, you guys do, you guys didn't come to the sidewalk, you know, because I am for the project, you know, some people might not think that, you know what I'm saying, but I think it's good use of the land. It's low impact, you know, brings the right people to the area, um, you know, they're keeping a pretty good buffer everywhere from you guys and from us.
See another thing too, is that we want it to be like something family-friendly, that people can bring their kids, there's like nothing like that in the area at all now. Um, and, you know, people have mentioned, well, I don't check out an nautical theme or something, but everything is nautical. You can't go into a store without getting lobster stuck in your face, you know? Uh, we're just, we wanna do something separate, and at the end of the day, how many kids wanna go to a lobster store or an antique store or something, you know? Not that those aren't great and don't have the place, but, um, you know, this is something more for like kids and families, so that's what I'm achieving, is non-abusive.
So I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just, uh, say, for quite owners, um, I, I was concerned about how it would affect you, looking at, at, at just a map, I thought it would directly impact you, but once you're in sight, it's, it is like a bowl, it, it, you couldn't have a better sight for a sound barrier like there, it goes up another fifty feet of ledge with trees before it gets up over to where you are. Almost be worth, just to alleviate the fears, just to swing by the site to get a feeling for, to be in there.
Or if they could even just, we haven't, we haven't seen or known anything, we haven't had any communication, so any of that would really help us.
Do you mean like a sidewalk, you mean?
Even seeing the map, we haven't seen any of it.
You mean, oh, for the plans and stuff?
Yeah, we don't even know exactly where it is. It's gonna be a bug.
So I have a question while.
That's a, that's a good idea.
Yeah, sure.
If you give me one of your email addresses, I can email you all of the plans.
I don't have it on me right now, but I think if you give it to Anthony.
So.
Don't go ahead.
Sorry.
So, um, Anthony, oh, Bree, I have a question. So, coming from a city with vagrants and vandals, um, and moving to a Rundle, which has been lovely, uh, what are you doing for security after hours?
So we're gonna have, that was one thing, we wanna have a security system set up, cameras on, you know, all dinosaurs, driveway coming in and out, um.
And is somebody checking those cameras, or, I mean, or do you have?
Somebody comes in and spray paints a dinosaur, we're gonna check them.
Well, no, that's fine. I guess what I mean, are they monitored, or, you know, the slides on a D V R, I, I, I'm not kidding, I mean, people.
Just monitor through the cameras, I mean, I don't know how, I don't, I don't think it would be feasible for us to say we could have like an around-the-clock security guard all year long.
No, no, I wasn't thinking that, but sometimes, you know, um, you can monitor.
It's an alarm, like, if somebody goes back.
Yeah, with emotion and, yeah, right.
But you can have animals with them up too, I mean, you know, motion detector will pick them up, even like.
Well, depends on how high you set them and where you set them, I mean, yeah, I have them on my road, and so, and you can set different locations with different sounds, so you know how far into the park they get, and whether it's, you know.
They're talking and not talking.
That's right.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm on board with that, I'm, I'm all for.
Yeah, and that's for your protection too, I mean, it's gonna be a fun site to, you know, hop into, a bunch of teenagers, you know? And you know it after it's closed.
Not that I know of.
Having some beer, riding some dinosaurs.
So.
Security.
Moving forward, we need to determine the application complete. Is there anything that, um, you know of that, um, is, is outstanding? I mean, outstanding in the, well, outstanding in the issue that they have not submitted in, in a submission criteria.
Do we wanna back them into the corner? No, the reason I say that is exactly what we did last time.
Oh, from a, well, and that's.
Because we still had submissions to come.
Right, and that's the double-edged sword of.
That's a double-edged sword to do that.
Do we, do we?
Because as soon as we did that, we have thirty days to make the decision.
Well, after the public hearing.
If you don't have all your stuff together, then the planning board, you have to, you to get an extension, or the planning board is obligated to, to act, and maybe deny, it may be a denial.
Or an extension.
Or an extension.
So in summary, what we would need to see are the audio, um, Anthony's change to conform to the architects, right?
The new driveway location?
New driveway location, I wanna reveal a little bit on some placement of plants.
That would be awesome.
Because you overdid it.
Before I underdid it, now I overdid it. You guys killed me with your screening and buffer definitions.
Sounds like Ted saving us some money right now. So those three things, anything else?
Well, the ones, we, we still have to get the lighting, we need the lighting, and.
I thought they had a lighting plan submitted.
Yeah, no, no, it was, you, you, I'm giving it to Jimmy Stockton to do the, uh.
That's the review.
That's the review.
Right, but they've, so.
They've done the work.
So the.
The work's been done, yes.
There was also the, uh, sorry, no, um, there was a request from, from the neighbor asking for more screening or buffer, whatever the problem.
On the, I think it's.
The cell side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's a pretty, that's, for starters, gonna be the last place people park, because they're gonna, it's farthest away from the course and everything. Um, aside from that, it's a pretty small area to buffer, if we gotta put some trees there.
We'll just walk here, we'll sit down with Ted and we'll just, I'll put all the trees exactly what Ted wants me to.
So.
That's easy.
From a, from a determination of completeness, I mean, it seems to me that the items that they are required to submit have been submitted.
Yeah, the DOT, if they're moving the driveway now, DOT, that driveway has been approved by DOT by.
Right, I mean.
By, what was that, by exemption or?
What do you mean, by exemption?
What did they say, what was the exact time?
Uh, it's current configuration, two access points, one in front of the building to the south, do not meet the minimum standards set forth on the state's Access Management Regulations. In order to receive a permit, the department will require the existing access in front of the building to be completely removed and excavated, creating a continuous ditch past the front of the building. Southern access will require paving, and if desired, can be widened out to thirty feet. Um, southern entrance does not meet all the minimum requirements, but the department will waive the non-complying issues.
It's a waiver. So you're giving a waiver, it's a completion.
I, according to.
That's already done.
Serves the same purpose, right?
It's definitely done.
If we consider it complete, with the thirty-day clock starts ticking, would you be able to get all this together in time?
Yeah.
Okay.
What, what do you mean?
So the, but the thirty-day, the thirty-day clock would start ticking after the public hearing.
Right.
So that would give time to address any comments that, that need to be done. I mean, I expressed this at a previous meeting, I'd rather get the public input sooner rather than later in the process.
And I'm notified, I did that, that's why I love these folks.
Exactly, but I mean, but to have that for the whole public hearing.
Grant a waiver.
Did that.
That's gonna take, our next one's in two weeks.
It's, it, yeah.
It seems like it, it is important to get the, the abiders' input on, the neighbors' input on this, because.
Or at least make them aware, so that.
Yeah.
Well, right.
To the chairman.
Yes.
They were discussing with the seasonal cottage of getting together.
Yep.
If you have a, uh, over at the seasonal cottage at the community center, so that you can get your residents and yourselves together.
That'd be very helpful, yeah, we'd be happy to host that whenever you.
And that way, the neighbors and Joe and everybody else can find out what's going on, show and tell, and instead of be kinda being hung out in the dark.
Right.
I mean, that's what, uh, I think that's what the butters are asking, and, uh, at the same time, before the season winds down, anybody who is, has any concerns can see it. I mean, for themselves or anything else, because again, like the seasonal cottage is, is quite a multi-million dollar project.
Right.
I mean, uh.
And it could be a lot of business for you too, you've got two hundred and sixty-three people there who'll be able to come play.
Every one of them's welcome. Bring your, bring your grandchildren, right?
So you should physically go look at the site, because it's deceiving, because when you walk into it, it really is protected, and it is like.
So you won't be able to see the dinosaurs?
I couldn't see, we couldn't see the cottages or anything between.
Not that we don't like dinosaurs, we just don't want it to be.
No, no, but I mean, I think your concerns are legitimate, it's just.
Back into the cottages.
If you physically go to the site, you'll see how.
Right.
Protected it is, and how little, if anything, you can see of the cottages from there.
Oh, we, yeah, we, we can meet somebody who.
Oh, oh, no, no, absolutely, absolutely, you shouldn't go walking around in there all by yourself, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we would like schedule.
You shouldn't go walking around in there all by yourself, but.
You'd wanna, you'd wanna, you'd want them to be able to describe a little bit about where you are in the context of where their proposal is, so.
Yeah, different maps, okay, here's the garden, the character, and this is how it's sitting in relationship and, uh.
I know what you're gonna say.
Well, I think that, well, I'll send you guys a copy of the plans that we've submitted, even though they're, they're gonna change, the entranceway's gonna change, and then I'll try to get a, um, an aerial photograph, and I'll overlay the golf course on the over, on the which will show your houses, and you can see the, the distance.
You don't have some, I have some photography that you could do, if you were just drawing.
Okay. Yeah, I understand, it's, it's.
A sharpie could help us out.
Yeah, when my two weeks from get together with them.
It's two weeks from, uh, it's on the, uh.
Yeah, so we can, we'll schedule a sidewalk, we just gotta get a contingent upon permission of.
They're just gonna be involved, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Well, I'll have Tony get together.
Whenever.
I was kinda just wanted to stress that you really can't come on the property without getting the agencies and the owners. They'll make sure that happens. The, the idea, Marty just had the right idea. Can you get a community room together?
Okay.
Let's come in, everything Anthony just described, no sending it, bring it right in there, come on, let's see your places too, exactly like this. Well, let's go up, do you have a community room?
Yes, we do.
Let's set it right up and throw it in public here.
It's a big community.
So he needs to know the same kind of thing that we just did with the water tank, right? So. So you're pretty, okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, our, our.
The consensus is that everybody.
They've already spent all their money on the base.
We already, we already spent the money.
And then scheduling a public hearing, do you have major concerns with that, with the, the items that are outstanding and, and coming to a conclusion within the statutory timeframe? Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, my only problem is, you know, Jim's on vacation, so I, you know, it'll slow down on the, on the way. Um, but from my standpoint, from landscaping and so forth, I, I, you know, work when entities come down, we, I don't know, just wanna make some tweaks there, you know, probably move some plans. Take some over to, uh, to Alan's place, um, over there, and maybe change a couple. By the way, good selection, boy, that place is gonna just shine. He picked some very nice plants.
Just too many of them.
Just the junipers.
I didn't, I told you, you guys, your definitions for the buffers here, ninety-five percent coverage, you've got it.
You could've put up a wall.
If I didn't, that's a wall, it's a wall.
I'd like to make a motion to be in the application complete.
I seconded, okay.
Go ahead.
Motion's been made and seconded, um, any discussion on that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
What's the name of the dinosaur, Marty?
Marty.
No, can't be, because you see dinosaurs don't have fur.
That's gonna stick.
It's a good deal.
That's gonna stick.
There, there were a few waiver requests, I think, um, we should probably just run through them real quickly, um. All state and federal approvals, we've gotten the DOT letter sign-off, you're, you're in the process of understanding what the D E P will require, or you.
We're also.
You met with them today, yeah.
They're just, I'm giving them the new plans.
Right, the new plan, yep. Um, coordination with the DOT on a traffic impact study, I'm just reading down through your letter that you submitted with the application, so.
Yeah, so we should probably, I'll, I'll contact this guy again, um, verbally, he's expressed to our general contractor that they're not looking to do with traffic impacts, I heard what we're doing, so.
Um, existing and proposed fire protection, right along one, so any, I mean, should have hydrant coverage.
Yeah, I already talked to, uh, the deputy chief about it, his only concern is being able to get a journey up, uh, up the stairs. He's got a stair climb, so, stair chair.
Water, as far as water, there are, there's a fire hydrant across the street, but also too, there is, when Dick had it done, there was water brought onto site, public water on site. There is.
It is a main, yeah.
So we're gonna.
So I mean, that's one thing that turned on years ago.
Okay.
Eight years ago, I think it was, or something like that.
That's, that's more from the, the drinking water supply.
That's a neat ancient.
But agents would be fired, yeah.
That's fine.
Right.
That's fine, now he brought, he brought that over.
So they could tap in.
Um, because at that time, along that way, before seasonal cottage was there, there was no, no access on that side of the road, except from crossing the road.
Right.
For hoses or anything else.
Yep. Okay, any comments from the fire chief on?
I, I could get written ones, but he said, first of all, there's not much of a fire, right?
Right.
There's no, there's really. Uh, vehicle fires in parking lot or something like that, and the only other. Vehicle fires in parking lot or something like that, and the only other thing, or, you know, somebody who has a medical emergency at a golf course, accessibility, and he looked at it and said, yeah, maybe use the stairs, and we, we climb stairs all the time, so, he said, um-
For point of record, I want, I would like a written statement from the chief, not a baby or anything else, so we have it in the record. Cause we've been, we played that game before.
Yep.
Yep. Was there a request for site distance delineated, are you looking for a waiver on that?
Well-
Yes.
Yes. Cause we're, we're putting the driveway in an existing spot already, and this is, I mean, this is from the, um, what's his name here?
The client company?
For the, uh, the O two?
I don't know his name on here. I mean, did they, did they?
He went down to it, and, yeah, he's like, as requested, I inspected your client's site on Route One in Arundel tax map, fifteen lots, twelve to twelve V on Friday. I mean, they've been down there to visually inspect it, and they're not.
Did he indicate that it is, say, in excess of five hundred feet, or whatever they measured the site distance to?
Uh, he didn't indicate that on here, but I'm pretty sure that's why he's telling us we can't have the, why we have to get rid of this one up here, cause it doesn't meet, you know, delineation, so-
Yeah.
He's telling us to move it down here.
Yeah, the little dip, right, right.
We were proposing to put the driveway right where that dip was to eliminate the dip from causing a problem, but there's gotta be way over four or five hundred feet of site lines in both directions where that, where we're proposing to move the driveway. And to stand up there, you can see for a mile to the right, and probably a quarter of a-
So, I mean, is that something-
We just don't wanna put the, like, I don't know if I have enough survey information-
Okay.
To, to produce the plan, looking in the direction that you're talking about, I have enough in, in one direction, I don't know how quick we can get a survey crew to go up here and-
Do the other direction.
Do a half a day's worth of work, so we can put the plan together, when you stand up there and look, it's obvious that you've got over the required amount, so she was just trying to-
Well, and that's what I was wondering, is if the DOT referenced an amount that you could reference on your plan?
No, not that I've, they haven't given any numbers.
I can ask Dan, our general contractor, to circle back and, cause if he went down and inspected it, and he's telling us that we have to put it here, I'm assuming it's because of site delineation, so.
Well, and you know, you've got a, a permitted, whether it was prior to permitting, or whenever it was, it was a permitted entrance to the facility, and, you know, you're not, that's the location of the driveway now, so, you know, if the DOT has blessed it, then that's ultimately-
But, just to be safe, why don't you email him and ask those specific questions?
Okay.
Say, we're putting in the driveway and the entrance as discussed, and just to confirm that we've got enough footage on either side that there's not gonna be an issue going forward, and have him say, and say, please answer yes or no.
And what is it?
And blame the planning board.
That's right, and blame the planning board, and give us a copy of that.
Right.
All right.
We could do that.
With this reply.
And that should be easy. So- Letter of compliance, you have Public Works Deputy, so-
Public Works, uh, this is not in their jurisdiction.
Right. So, any concerns from people on the waivers before we act on the, the motion for determination of completeness?
Well, I see the fiscal impact assessment being requested to be waived, is that, do you wanna do that?
The what?
Fiscal impact assessment.
I would say it's probably gonna be positive fiscal impact.
Analyzing, well, fiscal impact to municipal service and every system. I'm not really sure.
Fiscal impact means, and the impact on municipal services.
Right.
Which means that, you know, what is the, services versus revenues?
That's what that's all about, okay?
Yes.
Yep. Good. Okay.
Yeah, I have one question.
Yep.
What made you pick Marty?
Dinosaurs, who wanted to make that little killer kids, and frankly, adults, I mean, they're still making Jurassic Park movies. Sitting here, I see two dinosaur books behind you, I, I mean, I, I didn't put them there ahead of time, but I-
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's, it's one of those things that kind of has a universal appeal, it's all of them, and that's kind of our endgame of the original film.
I hope in your clubhouse too, that you put information about all the dinosaurs, so the kids can read it, and you have little backshoots and-
We actively sew on, you know, like a lot of mini golf courses on each hole, they'll have like, when you play Pirates Code, they tell you the story of Blackbeard, so, we kind of, we're hoping to figure out a way to get some placards on each hole, and like, get some fun facts about dinosaurs.
Oh, I think you absolutely should, absolutely.
Yeah, good, yeah.
Yeah, we want it to be, you know, educational.
Yeah.
So, we've got a, we've got a motion on the table to deem the application complete, we, that's been seconded, had discussion, all in favor of deeming the application complete?
I-
Any opposed? You man. So, then the next step would be scheduling a public hearing.
Would it be the next meeting, we ready to?
It would be the eighth of November.
Eighth of November.
When would you need to get plans by?
Tonight.
By, I don't even think I'll be home by tonight.
Next, can you get them to me next Thursday?
No.
Okay. Uh, how about that Monday, how late do you guys wanna get these plans, on the night before?
Well, how different will they be?
It's really just the driveway.
The driveway.
Oh, I don't think that's a big deal at all, there's good driveway.
And the trees, the landscaping.
Oh, the trees.
Unless it's on the big changes, then we'd need time to review, but if it's just the driveway and the trees-
My, my concern or question was, so that they can, the, the butters and seasonal cottages or anything else can get together with their plans, and so there is nothing, no surprises or anything else, so they, they, they can feel comfortable, and everything else along the way.
The sooner you do that, the, the better. You guys were here last meeting, was it?
Yeah.
So, you heard, heard what another applicant, for the first time, a neighbor showed up and had some, some issues, and we don't want that to happen.
Well, neither side wants to have that happen.
No, so, better to-
You guys listen to the notifications, you guys get a copy of the plans and the notifications at all?
No.
No.
Okay.
Not yet, you will for the, for the, for the public hearing, you will.
So, so-
We're gonna work with Tony to set up a zone where he can walk the site, and Anthony's guys in the plant, even about the site walk, yeah, he's just, yeah, he's gonna sign in for us.
Ted, is, are, are you comfortable with a public hearing on November eighth?
Yeah.
Is that?
Is it doable?
Yeah.
These advertisements, from a logistical standpoint.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make the motion, then, we schedule the public hearing on November eighth.
Second that, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Aye.
Okay.
Then generally, the public hearing is, I mean, obviously, people can speak up.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we've allowed some more informal conversation or input into the process tonight, you know, nobody's taken over and wanted to, you know-
I didn't see any torches.
Take on, yeah, so, you know, we, we typically allow some latitude there, but next, that, that night will be the formal public hearing where people, you know, were able to address any concerns that they have, don't have, sort of, stand up, say their piece, without anybody interjecting from your side of things, we can ask questions.
Okay. You vote, that, that after the public hearing?
That night, I mean, if, if everything is ready, and do it, we could, if there's still some outstanding issues, then we've got-
Thirty days.
A little bit of a window in order to do that before.
He's still gonna-
Do you do conditional approvals now?
I mean, most of our approvals do have a, several conditions associated with them.
True, it's up here.
Yeah.
So, it's to your benefit to get to them, because that makes the public hearing go, like, if they're your primary, you know, they're your obstacle.
Yep.
So, if you convince them and most of the community members, then you should have a pretty calm public hearing.
Cause the board isn't really seeing any problem, issues really, it's just we wanna make sure that, that this thing that we don't see that could be impacting the neighbors.
Yep.
Right.
You know, things that they're more in tune with than we are.
Right, away their fears, and I think it'll be in good shape.
This can passes.
Do you want to hear me make some room? So, can I, can I just make sure I have, sorry, everything jotted down for the remaining items? The professional sound study, um, the site delineation from DOT.
The site distance.
Distance, sorry. Anthony's gonna update the landscaping and the driveway plans.
I'm grading, I'm grading.
Right, the grading.
I'm grading, it's just at the corner there, the, the linkage between the two plans, there's a, there's a conflict between the, we'll pick up.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you have a wall, and it wasn't, yeah.
And is that it?
I, I just have one thought, okay, along where that is throughout there, okay, there is a ditch, okay, or drainage per se. Traffic wise or anything else, does D, do, can they fill that in and turn it on and, uh?
No. It's DOT, it's DOT's ditch.
Uh huh.
It's DOT's ditch, no, you don't throw in DOT's.
I'm just asking a question, I was thinking of, for the sake of traffic or sound like so.
I, I don't know if, I mean, they can go and ask, right? They can ask, but-
I don't know, I, it's just-
The question is, why do you wanna spend the money to, to do enclosed drainage for DOT, cause they're not gonna do it for you.
I'm just thinking of a presentation to turn out, appeal.
I, I don't disagree with Marty, there's a very much of a curb appeal issue there, but at the same-
That's my only reason I'm asking the question.
If they wanted to, I would certainly not dissuade them from approaching DOT to do that, but they have a part to go for us.
It's-
Yeah, that might be something in the future, cause I, I mean, what's gonna happen, you put the culvert in, and it's gonna make the yard look nice.
Right.
But, you're not giving the ditch time to slow some of the water down.
Right.
You're gonna get faster water coming out, maybe some erosion at the end, and then you've got the other driveway culvert right there, and, so.
I, I just-
Like, I would wait till, like, get going, see how everything's working, and then maybe try it later on, if that's something you wanna do to make it look better, but. We've got another ditch, we've got like a double ditch in that situation, we've got water coming out the parking lot, that's gonna come down and it's gonna ditch above the DOT ditch.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, I remember, I remember, it's like three followed.
So, you're still gonna have something, and there's a little berm between the two, and that's where the landscaping is on, is on that berm, so.
Okay, I, I, I don't mean to throw a randitization-
No, it's not a ranch, it's, it's an idea that costs, sometimes they, they help out, and we don't, we don't, it's expensive, I'll take a order, fight with DOT, cause they specifically said they wanted us to remove that, that driveway curb cut and put a ditch in. So, they didn't, you know, there's an existing pipe, they want the pipe out, um, so, we're just gonna-
It's hard, it's hard to drive through a ditch.
I tried it.
We all have it.
Thank you all.
On a mini mission.
All right.
I don't, my, my, uh-
Items-
You wanted this back, no, this though, this was the last one. No, I didn't, I didn't know if they wanted extra for, for the seasonal cottage, but I was-
Item six, proposed special town meeting warrant articles for-
People's correctional facilities, contractor yards, and wind and energy conversion system.
Oh, so, damn near, what I'll do is, um-
Like we know.
You gotta, you gotta-
I gave them, I gave them my actual, I'll be there, so they went back to that, for show and tell.
Thanks for coming up, we'll, I'll join these guys when they get out of here.
I'll be great, dude.
So, what we got here, Ted?
Uh, that's-
I don't know.
Our last time-
I reckon we had a little conversation about-
Yeah, we had something that used to, uh, which one to put it on, and, uh, I got the actual warrant.
What's the deadline for, for the warrant?
Well, you know, here's the thing, we're piggybacking on what the selectmen were doing. Selectmen are finishing up the, uh, the street design and construction ordinance revision, and we're gonna do basically a, a repeal in the place. So, that's, as soon as I finish the compendium, and as soon as they, they approve it, then I'll go to the selectmen, and the selectmen will then review it and then send it to the planning board for, to hold the public hearings, this is gonna be there all this, and, uh, the planning board will have, uh, conduct the mandatory public hearing on it, and then they can, they will set the special town meeting, or, and what we wanna do is piggyback a lot of our stuff on there, especially to, you know, get a lot of house cleaning out of the way, and that includes both of what we had actually done last time, when you can contract the yards, you can, uh-
Halfway houses.
Halfway houses, and that stuff, and get that all done, we also have, we have a couple of other changes that we need to do, that we, we've already approved, we probably forgot. Uh, the setback, basically, the, the relief from having two, uh, two front ditches on the private way, because of the driveway. And there's a couple of other ones that, off the top of my head, I can't remember, I haven't been filed, so, we're gonna put them all together with the street design ordinance, and then have that massive public hearing, and then just piggyback on, on the, the selectmen's special town hall, to get this house, a lot of house cleaning stuff that we have not taken care of, that we need to. Then we need to start focusing on that, who give residential districts, because our residential districts have sat there, been waiting for us to implement a compliment, and-
Court has a problem.
Their, their problems and that, and so we're gonna hold off on that until we, we do that, we can rewrite it, we need to get that. And it's not, we're gonna have another meeting, I believe, the second week in November, Richard scheduled that, and probably I'll get a, somebody noticed on that, but we're gonna have another meeting in November. It's gonna be not on a Thursday, but it's gonna be a Tuesday, or Monday, it's, it's gonna, probably ask you which one would be better for you, because what, what Keith did is Keith tied up all the Mondays and Tuesdays for the rest of the year, and he controlled this place for the rest of the year. And the planning board, of course, has got it. So, we have, we have places in which we can sort of connect this issue.
Okay.
My question, also to ask you is, when do the selectmen anticipate the special town meeting? Before the first of the year, or after?
Before.
Because you have also two holidays before the first of the year.
What are you, what are you thinking we'll be able to, to do the public hearing?
That's why my question, I guess, is-
You know, and Marty's bringing up a point, it's gonna be tough, because they're probably gonna wanna do it on one of our regular planning minutes, and we are booked to the max, don't forget, next Fri-, uh, two weeks from now, we're gonna have Stilfen?
Yep.
Okay, we have public hearings.
Right.
So, we're gonna have one public hearing, K K W has been funded, he can help, we have Stilfen, um-
There's a meeting.
Yeah, I have, I have a, uh-
And Christmas, Christmas is what, on a Monday, Christmas Eve is Monday, Christmas Day is Tuesday?
Well, see, we've got, we've got here for Christmas, that was the one that was-
And you got weather.
Hey, I'm gonna be away, and, uh, and November, yes, and November of Thanksgiving is the twenty-second, so it's early.
Yeah, which, which is planning that, so, who's bringing cranberry sauce?
I'll bring the cranberry sauce, I make homemade cranberry sauce.
Oh, good, I'll be good.
I do say so myself.
With the orange?
Yeah, so we have a problem, we're, we're backing up against a lot of stuff.
Thanksgiving always causes a, an issue for our meetings and things, and it's fourth, Thursday.
But Christmas is Monday and Tuesday. But Christmas is Monday and Tuesday, so that puts a wrinkle.
Puts a huge wrinkle.
In the week.
And Thursday, then you have.
Yeah, we're supposed to, it puts a huge wrinkle on the week, cause we're supposed to have a meeting on the twenty seventh. We might have, gee, it's much more attractive to have it on the twentieth, right? The week before Christmas.
Oh, God.
Right, that's kind of the reaction. You, sometimes we've gotten away with going in November on the, the, the twenty ninth, for instance, in here.
Right.
We've done that before, but we've never done the week of Christmas.
I'd much rather, I'd much rather we do the, the fifth week, the fifth Thursday in November.
Yeah.
I agree.
Oh, we're sure, we're trying to shoehorn everything in before the end of the year.
Um, we'll see.
We've got five Thursdays in January.
So. So, I mean, that's something, the board, the planning board, I mean, the planning board told me, told me, look, you know, construction season's gonna be over.
Right.
You know, so, not sure exactly why we're, we're speeding on this, and it's much better for us since we have our own agendas too. Um, might need me to go to.
Well, I'm with Jens, I think January is wide open, let's just do it then to all be sitting here.
That's why, that's why I threw out those questions.
Right.
It's a good question.
No, Marty, it was very.
And I don't know how the planning board's gonna react to that, to the roads.
Right.
Do we even have a choice?
Roads have a choice.
No, because guess what? The selectmen don't listen to, they don't, when we turn around and have things, they didn't even ask their opinion, they just down, threw it away.
Well, um.
Am I right or am I wrong?
I, I wouldn't answer that if I were him.
Opinion wise.
It's on the record, it's on the camera.
I don't care, I don't care, I, I speak my piece no matter what.
And I, I think, I think, Marty, the situation here is, I think if the, if the planning board were to make what they felt were very important recommendations and ask the selectmen to consider something, I believe they would. If the planning board was, was strongly, felt strongly about.
Okay.
Okay, and if they choose not to, that's, that's their priority. And it goes to town meeting, and then town meeting is the decision ultimately.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so my report.
Yes.
Oh, yes, uh, what was in your packet? Uh, you got the, I, I never gave you the FEMA stuff, I thought you should all enjoy getting edicts from the federal governor.
Is this their formal redelineation of the?
Yes, so we're gonna have a public hearing which no public comment will be allowed.
Just to inform?
Yeah, it's a public hearing, to me, it's a set story of apartments, but we're not gonna change anything, we're done.
We're adopting more of a Xi Jinping type of government style.
Yeah, it's for the greater common good.
Of whom?
And you are, you're arguing about this Yankee running dog?
Does that affect, does this, will that affect the, the project on the Thompson Road?
Actually, no, the Thompson, yes, it will affect the project on the Thompson Road, they won't be no longer in the, in the shoreline zone, I mean flood zone.
So they don't have to go up one and a half feet, two feet?
That's why they haven't pulled the building.
They're brown level.
Yeah, they haven't pulled it down.
Or that made them happy.
Yes, we have, uh, we've lost a number of wetland areas in the town, we've gained a little bit more wetland along the river, but, uh. Uh, not wet, flood plain, I'm sorry, we've, but we've, there's been some corrections in other places, and of course in the velocity zones along the beach, that's where the pain is, and that's where the screaming and yelling is, and, uh.
The big delay.
That's the delay. Understandable, you know, because as you know, Jamie, they are not basing this on topographic contours. Because the floodlines don't follow topographic contours.
They do to a.
Flat line.
Large, large scale topographic contour, not, not from a.
Right, like one, yeah. One foot equals sixty feet.
Any, I mean, you, you mentioned the Thompson Road issue, you know, where I presume from what you're saying, less floodplain will be delineated. Any other major, uh, changes to, I mean.
That's the largest.
I remember correctly, a rumble doesn't have a, a ton of floodplain area other than, you know, along the major rivers and, and streams.
And so along major rivers and streams and that, and the, and the Thompson, it's actually Brimstone and Irvingwood.
Right.
The area between basically DuBois and Golf Course, uh, was delineated since nineteen ninety six as a huge floodplain area.
Right.
And there was no, with actually, um, stream pouring from Brimstone Pond discharging into that area, and which is a patent fossil that's just not true. I follow the streams, they go the opposite direction, they flow towards Brimstone, not towards this, this giant wetland. It's a very large wetland, it's, it's a, um, it's, it's, it's a wooded swamp, uh, and it, and because of logging, there's areas that are turned into marshes. But it is not a floodplain area, I'm sure that it, the water rises in heavy rain events, but it's not quote unquote a floodplain, it's not caused by backed up water. It's not caused by a river overflowing its banks or water coursing, it's just because it's a bowl.
It's a, right, it's a swamp.
And they, they determined that that doesn't constitute a real floodplain, so. Now, big huge, if you look at a floodplain map, you'll see this giant, the log right in the center of the rumble and go, what the heck is that? And then when you wa- I, I was here a week and I said, uh, uh, actually a homeowner had his, had his mortgage yanked. He was building a, a, a house on Irving Road and came garralling and saying, why did the bank yank my, my mortgage application? They said I'm in a floodplain, and his property was in that floodplain. And I said, I don't know, maybe go out and take a look, cause I don't know what this huge blob is out in the middle of nowhere. And I walked in and what it was is, yeah, his property was in the floodplain, but there was a huge drop from his house location to the lower area, there was a basically a bluff.
They still wouldn't fund his mortgage.
When they, and I was explaining to him, yes, they did, they did, but, uh, and then I walked all the way across just to find out what the heck is this?
Wow, that's, oh, yeah, gave me a huge.
It can make major issues.
It can be a very major issue.
All right, any other, uh?
Uh, yes, let's see, as I said, the, uh, they're, they're pretty much finished with the, uh, street design and construction ordinance. Um, we have, uh, I have some miles you have to sign, that's BDL. Uh, capable, capable K nine needs to be signed, uh, to be, Marty, to the punch, what projects are going on. We have, uh, Branch Brook Fuel has started and they've got their, um, all the concrete works done, they've paved their road and they're getting, getting ready to set up their tanks. So they're ready to go, um, we have a subdivision coming in, which is a re-subdivision on Black Dog Road. Um, and, uh, that's, it's gonna be a funky one, but it looks like it's gonna work.
Where's Black Dog Road?
It's off of Old Post Road, um, close to, um, where Log Cabin Road, it's close to the intersection.
I drive around, I'm learning everything else.
That's how much it's worth.
No, I think it's right around the log from the action.
And then, uh, let's see, what else do we have going on, um? Pay attention, I forgot, oh, I do have another, uh, a letter from, um, Attorney David Jones, which I'll give to, out to you right now regarding the Stilfen. The Stilfen's attorney, and, uh, they had challenged him to, uh, essentially, uh.
Duel.
Yes, duel, a little duel on, on sound easements, and he's done some work, not bad.
So you've got a Jones letter and a mission to the Rain Court.
I got a Jones letter, yeah, then you're adding the Rain Court letter.
Yep.
And Jones letter, uh, also, so you, so you, in case you're wondering, uh, Jim and I spent four, four hours here with Leah. Doing our written testimony before D P, uh, DuBois.
Yep.
So we did that today, because we will be, we will be witnesses in that hearing in which they're having a hearing on the revocation of DuBois.
Who represents DuBois in that proceeding?
I believe that's Ed McCall.
And is he a juror?
Portland, he's Portland, he's Portland too. Um, and they, and it's from the AGs, AGs, it's, uh, I'm just Kate, that's all I know, talked to her on the speakerphone. So that's Kate, uh, you know, or I don't, oh, okay. So that, that is moving forward, so we're reading that past, and this is not a, a court case, this is a, an administrative case. They have a designated, um.
Bit of mediation or?
No, it's not mediation, it's a hearing on revocation.
Oh, a hearing on revocation.
They have called, D P has already settled on the revocation. You know, I don't think the vote's been for ten years or something, so this is serious matter.
You think they'll stop operating even though their, their permits revoked?
Oh, I speculate.
Doesn't sound like it.
Yeah. That's. I don't wanna vote against it.
Like playing the volleyball.
So, um, that's all I've got right now.
Question.
Ah, I thought Marty's got more, yes, sir.
Anything from, uh, the agricultural, about animal husbandry that we had, you were gonna send up to them to see the review?
Nope.
Was it sent?
No. How do you like that? I didn't send it, and the reason I didn't send it was because I wanted to see what happened with the compliancy first. I think somebody's knocking on the door. While we're doing a bad rhythm session.
So should we sign?
Please.
Yeah, sign it.
You got your pen?
What's the plan?
I was, I was.
What happens?
Okay, I was just.
Cause I talked to Wade Monroe about it, so.
Yeah, so I can't sign that, are you helping her?
It is, it is her, she locked herself out.
Who is?
For rent.
Are you kidding me, why didn't she call me?
Sorry, we're closed.
So this is, these are the.
That's, uh, capable K nine.
So that's from September third, ma.
Question.
I was here for that.
Question on being at, uh, B and B.
B and B, yes, sir.
I was not here for the public hearing.
I saw it, I saw it reflection in the window, bad thing.
Is it pulled out there?
No, it was in between.
I pulled it out last week.
Yeah, she was in the best of view.
I thought, I thought, sure, the outer door would be, would walk behind me, but not the inner door.
Oh, yeah, so I'm just like hanging out with them, cause I know people.
So, is this all the same?
Did I miss anything?
No.
Really?
No, no.
I didn't think so.
No.
So are you, are you order that needs to be sent?
It's just. Nothing important in the last fifteen minutes.
It wasn't fifteen.
So I'm not gonna sign it for the chairperson, since Rich was here that night, he didn't sign, is that right?
Yep.
Does that work?
Yep, works for me.
Did we, I was assuming we had a motion for.
So we still have the check? No, no, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, is that, is that part of the deal? I mean, I can get my way, somebody did that, I thought it should have, unless they sent it over from Kenny Buck.
I don't think you have one, yes.
So then you? Yeah, I think they sent it over from Kenny Buck. They sent it over just to. I don't know. I think it's, it's nothing to. So it's, I think it's just our copies.
I think he's still on probation.
I was here part of K nine.
Well, I'll try to be good.
Then yes.
A question, has everybody done their affidavit?
No.
No.
No, for which one?
In order to, well, there's only one.
Stilfen?
Stilfen, if you plan to attend next on, on November eighth and vote, you, and you did not attend both public hearings, you have to do your, your, uh, affidavit, it has to be, uh, sealed and by a notary, so please, get it done or else you won't be able to vote. Leah's gonna be here, she's gonna have a big night's stick too.
I left right after, I went to the airport that night and they were done for all intents and purposes.
I think you're all set.
Okay.
So, but I was here for both meetings.
Okay, if you're, if you were in attendance.
Yes, but I wasn't here for the entire meeting, but they were essentially done.
It's a public hearing, it's a public hearing, it's, that's, that's the critical.
I was here for that, the whole thing.
So if you were here for both public hearings.
I was.
Then you don't have to do the affidavit, those who did not, you have to watch the, uh, the exciting video, which is online, and, uh, I will be sending some DVD copies suitable for Christmas, and then, um, then what you, uh, what you have to do is sign that affidavit. If you don't have a copy of the affidavit, then, uh, let me, I'll send you an email, cause there's a link on Leah's email on the affidavit, I think she sent it to everybody.
I just didn't want somebody to say, oh, she wasn't here for the whole meeting, but I was here for all of that part of the meeting.
The only thing we care about, the, the, where it gets sticky in procedure, legal procedure is gonna be, well, you were here for the public hearing, oh, you weren't here for the public hearing. Then you can legitimately be challenged on your, on your property.
Okay, well, I was here.
Is this the right pen?
Yes, that is the right pen.
Really?
Or if you really wanna make a statement, you wanna do it real Johnny.
Come out very well.
Use a vowel.
It's just for, it's for our local files, right?
Uh, it's for our files, you won't, you won't sign, you won't put that in, uh.
There you go.
You won't take that.
So what's the link for the video anyway?
You go on the town website.
Okay, and the video was there.
Yeah, you, what you do is you go to public records.
Planning board.
And then planning board and then video.
So you think there'll be an issue for that, cause I do wanna be able to vote, I mean, I did sit.
Significant, I can say.
If you were there at the public law.
I was, but as I said, I left before it was over.
Doesn't matter.
So I, you know, I wasn't there because of the, the work planning board meetings I had to go to, I wasn't. I don't think I was here for either one of them, and I watched them both, I needed to sign that, yeah, because I would be, yeah, I watched them before the previous meeting, thinking that it was gonna be part of it.
Right, I'm on. Oh, no, no, no problem, Marty, and that was a great question about the end of the year.
Yeah, I haven't signed the affidavit, now is Simone there at town hall?
She's not there all the time, she's there, and unfortunately, we have a notary at town hall, which is cool, but that's the way that's.
So could you give us an idea when she'll be available?
This is, I wasn't here for the public hearing on this one. This was last.
So you didn't, you didn't vote on this one?
Did banks still have that issue or?
And what comes this one?
Well, they could, but I mean, what's the language, I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm not gonna walk into a bank and just say, hey, will you sign that?
It's not that, no, it's just witness your signature.
Well, Biddeford Savings has, I think, a TD Bank, I think they.
TD Bank always has.
They always have a notary on.
They have two.
I'm not sure where you, bank.
So, do you have the language of the affidavit, I guess? We have, uh, my office has notaries every day.
Yeah.
Every day. So can you email out the language of the affidavit that needs to be sent?
I will send you the link to it, because Leah.
It should be in one of your emails. Should we just print it, yeah.
It should be in one of the emails.
So three things to sign.
I didn't see any email.
You're having a bad time emailing.
I am.
I am not the.
Yeah, I will do that, I'll make sure, I will send you.
Just resend it so that people can.
This, this and that.
It's the same, I'll be, these two are the same.
So you have to sign.
Yeah, I'm putting on the show.
No, no, I meant one, one has to sign both, yeah, one was here, okay, so I sign both, I sign that, I think I'm done.
Yes, please.
That's nicely. No, I'm, I'm usually there.
There's more than one page, guys.
Oh. Oh, you are, is that? So we have to bring it up, why can't I?
You have not signed one page.
There's two pages.
Two pages of each. Notarizing that to witness.
Not me, that's you. Not me.
I mean, if.
It was a collective you, Marty.
So let's, so we bring the affidavits with us to the meeting?
That, that'll be helpful.
Uh, yes, well, I think, I'm gonna just give it to Leah because, do we have a journal?
Yes.
Make the motion, we adjourn.
Where's the second page?
All of them.
Cause I asked you what to do with it, she didn't want to do with it.
Whatever happened.
Tab, there's two pages, I'll vote to sign.